And there was no. Cup is changing. Yeah.
Off the door.
Oh, it's locked that way? Oh, that one is, oh.
Uh-oh, didn't hear it.
The side door.
I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's implication will be given by Reverend Milton Smith from the Herman, Mount of Herman Missionary Baptist Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow heads in prayer. Lord, we come to you this evening thanking you for this glorious day. We thank you for this beautiful city of Tarpon Springs, residents and visitors. We pray tonight for our city leaders, our mayor and commissioners, that you bless them in this meeting. Lord, that you would look after the city workers that work the streets and the offices each day. We also pray for the first responders, our firemen and policemen, that you would grant them safety. Remember not only this city, but this great state and this country. We ask a special prayer upon those workers that are furloughed, that you may grant their needs. Now bless this meeting tonight, grant wisdom, knowledge, and sound judgment. In your name we pray, amen.
Lethal, the United States of America. And to the representative of which is fair. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, and please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to start our meeting with public comments that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you'll be given four minutes.
My name, Andrea Salivaras, four ninety-five Riverside Drive. And I come to make a few comments, if you know mine, with for the city manager, the mayor, and commissioners. I have business in the spanducks for many years. And I want to say to all of you, I don't see any commissioners anymore to come to spanducks to see what happened for the spanducks. The only difference where I say I'm talking about for myself, I'm not talking about for the organization we have down there. I asked personal for years. We need an officer in the spanducks, at least we can, because the traffic. I want to ask the commissioners, why they not walk in the spanduck to see what happened? I want to ask the commissioners, where, what are we planning to do for the spanducks? For two things, soliciting, we discussed, I asked this for a long time. And secondly, are we accepted arts and crafts? Are we leave spanducks, are we making spanducks flea market, permanent flea market? Or we make it a little bit better? Every place we go, every place I go, any city, small city, we don't have the flea market, they don't have flea market on the main street. So I ask you tonight, all of you, with respect, think about what we plan to do for the spanducks. We pay a lot of rent, we pay a lot of taxes. And you leave the spanducks permanent for someplace flea market. If you like it, leave it. If you don't, do something, vote, not tomorrow. I'm not saying yesterday because you're not here, but I'm asking you today, if it possible. I think I asked you on the side for a long time ago, for these problems, nobody respond. But I asked you one more time, come to the spanduck to see what kind of spanducks we have. The place who is making more money for the city, and we forget about it. I have some commissioners, don't worry, Andy, we take care of it, nothing happens, zero. Please, Mayor, this time I direct to you, do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Mayor, if there aren't any more, are there more public comments?
Uh, let's wait.
Okay, I was gonna see if you wanted to respond to the solicitation.
Go ahead, sir.
Jan Simon and Joanne Simon, one four three four Red Oak Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. We are developing at two oh five Sunshine Drive. All right, first of all, my wife and I would like to extend a thank you to the city manager, Mark Licoris, and building, developing director, Kevin Powell, for your assistance in getting the construction of our new home off to a good start. However, we have concerns regarding Gnoye Park, a residential area that has been plotted since nineteen twenty-six. All right, the last four years has shown potential growth in this area, which has infuriated some of the neighbors, and we feel the city has not gotten ahead of this growth. We plan on being in our home in approximately five months, and as good neighbors, we have a few concerns. The city has held up our permit for our road plans. We were directed to hire a civil engineer to extend Sunshine Drive to the end of our driveway, even though the website says the department is responsible for maintenance and construction of city streets, sidewalks, street sweeping, stormwater collection system. We hired a civil engineer, submitted plans in mid-December. We're still waiting on return calls from Heather and Tom Function. To date, we did not know the width of the road we are to construct. Contrary to the website, we were given specific directions of a width of twenty-five feet. The existing road is fifteen feet now. Do we conform to twenty-five, do we stay with existing? We have no directions. I know there's been meetings being held constantly. Additionally, in two thousand and eight, the city paved Plaza Place, and in two thousand and fourteen, a portion of Sunshine Drive in front of the two homes next to where my home is being, our home is being constructed. All right, we're required to pave to the extent of our driveway. Number two, infrastructure in the neighborhood. We're concerned about the runoff. There's a variance meeting tomorrow night about the house that wants to be built directly in front of us. Our house is fifteen to twenty feet above this house. There is no infrastructure. The biggest concern we hear from the neighborhood and all the neighbors coming in is that where is all this water going to go? We're not building a mansion, we're building an eighteen-hundred-foot square home, all right? I don't want all of my runoff to go into the, everybody else's front door, all right? This development has been plotted, the neighborhood was plotted in nineteen twenty-six. This development by the developer came in four years ago, and nobody has gotten ahead of this in the city to plan on the infrastructure. Where is the runoff going to go? I've been here before and heard concerns from other residents about the development, about the runoff and about the infrastructure. All right, this is our biggest concern, and we want to know for ourselves and for the neighbors, where is the city on this, and are you ahead of this? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Peter Lax, five one four Ashland Avenue. Sure y'all saw this a few weeks back, North Pinellas Clearwater Times, Friday, December twenty-eighth, because that was big article about the tax breaks. We'll get to that in a moment. Down on the bottom, Pinellas Clerk of Court closing Tyrone Branch on Sixty-Sixth Street. That's way down south, what does it bother us for? Well, let me read the bottom paragraph. The Tyrone closure is part of a long-term consolidation of the clerk's office. The North County Branch at twenty-nine, five eighty-two U. S. Nineteen in Clearwater, just south of Curly Road, will also close at some point, Burke said, though a date for that closure hasn't been set. Now, they closed the DMV office up here in Tarpon, the clerk's office, the satellite, and we took over some functions, I guess, in the senior thing, and that was our closest office. I went there in November and December because I go and pay the real estate taxes directly. That's a busy place, lot of people, lot of people waiting. That area serves us, Palm Harbor, Oldsmar, Safety Harbor, Clearwater, Dunedin. So, why do I bring this up? Because I think it's at a point where this board needs to reach out. The city manager can talk at the mayor-manager meeting, or whichever one's coming up next, about organizing our communities here to advocate to keep this office open. Because if this office closes, the next one that's available is down in Clearwater, either at the old courthouse down by Fort Harrison, and I think there's a DMV clerk's office next to the food patch on Missouri and Cleveland over there. I can imagine the crowds that are going to be there, how much the lines are going to be, and how far it's going to be an inconvenience to get down there. So, heads up, because that's something that's easily missed. Secondly, now on the voters to decide on tax breaks. I would say at this point, if you wish to get us to support this, one, I would have liked to have seen some data or proposed ordinance or proposed guidelines, how the organizational or authoritarian, or the authority of this board or any other boards would handle this proposition of giving away tax breaks up to a hundred percent. It doesn't say how the criteria would be, would it be a whim, this person gets it, this one doesn't? And in the article, it says it would be to grant exceptions up to ten years and up to a hundred percent of the assessed value of eligible improvements for qualifying businesses on a case-by-case basis. So if I buy a piece of vacant land and put a two-million-dollar building on it, I'm not charged Tarpon taxes on a two-million-building till ten years later? I don't think some of these things were thought out. So if you want to get us on board to pass this referendum, I think we need to hear more from the board, the commission, the administration, as to the criteria, the basic draft ordinance. I'm sure Mr. Trask has other cities that you mentioned in here that have this, that could give you sample ordinances that you could put out and review. But I think that's important, that we know some of those things before we give you permission to give tax breaks up to a hundred percent for up to ten years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments that will not be discussed tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Lou Esposito, and I'm here about the sidewalks that.
Excuse me interrupting you, this is one of the items that we're going to be discussing.
Oh, okay.
You talking about the South Spring Boulevard, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about that. Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Comments that will not, only items that will not be discussed tonight? Thank you. Question, Seber, you had a comment?
Yes, I wondered if Chief could answer to Andy about the solicitation and whether we have police officers on the dock.
Well, I mean, we.
I know I get asked that question all the time.
Sure, you see us down there, right?
Yeah, and I know the answer to this solicitation, but.
Right.
You know, if you could explain it.
Sure.
It would help.
We have ramped up bike patrol, we have officers doing foot patrol. We have a code enforcement officer that spends a lot of time down there. We've cited people for, you know, the open solicitation of the menus, but they do it up and down the docks, it's very hard to catch. We've even worked undercover operations down there. So we put a lot of resources into policing the docks and trying to handle a lot of the problems down there. It's never going to be one hundred percent, but I think, you know, we got a pretty good handle on it.
I know that I get the comments all the time, and I guess it's also a First Amendment issue, and there's rules to where they can solicit and can't. So it is a problem, and I'm just as concerned about it.
Yeah, I mean, the enforcements, we can do it, but it's got to be done right, on the menu issue.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Okay, we are now going to item number one, which is a presentation. Vice Mayor Banther will do a presentation on the proclamation Irish American Heritage Month.
Yes, thank you. A proclamation, whereas the city of Tarpon Springs celebrates the upcoming Irish American Heritage Month and the tremendous role Irish immigrants and their descendants have played in the development of our great nation. And whereas Irish American Heritage Month is a great opportunity to celebrate the thirty-three million Americans with Irish ancestry, their contributions to the betterment of our country. Whereas this month and every month, we appreciate their efforts in helping usher in a new era of American prosperity. And whereas with religious devotion, strength rooted in the love of family, and confidence in the promise of America, Irish immigrants have engaged in the American experience in robust and meaningful ways. Whereas during Irish American Heritage Month, Americans across the country will dawn the traditional green garb and celebrate the patron saint of Ireland, an annual tribute to the great country of Ireland. Whereas the city of Tarpon Springs looks forward to a bright future of greater friendship, cooperation, commerce for centuries to come. Therefore, I Vice Mayor, the Vice Mayor David Banther, by virtue of the authority vested, the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, hereby celebrate our friendship with Dublin, Ireland. Acknowledge the upcoming Irish American Heritage Month to be celebrated in March. And I'll give this to the Lord Mayor, Dublin, I'm there in two weeks.
Thank you, thank you, and I wish you have a nice trip. Have a nice time and be safe, I will. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item?
All right, here we go, thank you. Peter Lax, five one four Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Commissioner Banther and Mayor Alahuza, for putting forth this proclamation, where you put forth how the Irish Americans, their contributions to the betterment of our country, their efforts in helping usher in a newer era of American prosperity, with religious devotion, strength rooted in the love of family, and confidence in the promise of America. They have engaged in the American experience in robust and meaningful ways. Very nice, very nice. Do we remember our history? When the Irish Americans were vilified? Same thing with Italians, Greeks. Hey, I lived in Palm Harbor for a while in the sixties, and I tell you, the only Greek there, I got my fair kitten. So who's our latest target? Who's our latest target? Well, those brown people coming up, bringing up all them drugs and rapists and murderers and child molesters. And what has it brought to us? What has it brought to us? We have a situation in our country brought about by idiotic policies. The government has shut down, and thank you for bringing that up. And I'm going to tell you, it affects people all over. I'll tell you what, if you go out on the boat this weekend and you need help, who's helping you? Coast Guard, they ain't getting paid. I tell you, I watch a lot of business channels, CNBC, CNBC World. Earlier before I came here, the head of Delta was saying that because they don't have federal inspectors, they've got planes waiting to be delivered, to be put into use, that are sitting there that can't be used. Another segment spoke about how the amount of GDP and the loss of earnings and the spending power that that ripples through the economy has already generated enough. The amount that that has reduced would have paid the five billion, we've lost that, and we're losing it more. And why? Because we want to deny some people the ability to come here and share their contributions in the betterment of our country. So, I don't know, I only know one person in D. C., and he don't talk to me too much, maybe he talks to a few y'all. Tell him to get off his horse and get this country back in action.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? I hear none, thank you, Vice Mayor. And we are now going to item number two. Bob Robinson, the project manager director, will give us an update on the projects, the ongoing project.
How we're going to start is, as I told you when we talked in the work session, that we're going to be giving you quarterly updates on projects. Some of the main emphasis that we're going to do are some beautification projects, signs, but there are also some other projects. So we're using this opportunity to give our quarterly review of where we are and with projects. So we're going to start out with the first few of ongoing beautification projects and in-house projects with Tom Function, and then we'll continue down the list and end up with Bob Robertson, our project coordinator.
Good evening, Tom Function Public Works Director. Thanks for following, I've got Irish American here, got a chance to follow up the Irish American Heritage Month, so thank you. Couple items that come up in our beautification. We'll start with the overhead string lighting we talked about doing on Hibiscus. We're getting to that point now, we've got approval from the south-side business owners to hang the lights across the street. We're working with the church and waiting for their final okay to do the hanging up there. We come up with an anchor system, we'll propose to them when we sit down with them. And the other issue is just getting power to where the lights are going to go. There's a little bit of a challenge there by pulling the power off the streetlights. It could have an effect when you use the streetlights for events and all, so that's the next challenge as far as that goes. Tree lighting was also came up. We had installed some tree lighting, the base of the trees in Mother Meers Park, that was during the Christmas operation. Those lights are still there, and they're up there permanently. We will be doing some tree trimming and lights along the base of the trees on Tarpon Avenue. And that's got some challenges, we're going to be trimming the trees on Tarpon Avenue next couple of weeks, then we'll start that. There's also a tree removal, I talked to Commissioner Carr about the tree removal, that'll be happening in a couple of weeks. The challenge that we have in that area is getting consistent power to those areas. There's no power within those tree wells, so we're going to have to find an area where we can pull some power off, so it's going to take a little bit of time. We'll be a little bit further ahead, but of course, the seasonal responsibilities, Christmas, Epiphany, and the shortage of staff along those holidays has actually delayed me a little bit, I apologize. But we'll get there, hopefully sooner than later. We have done some work on downtown Tarpon Avenue, we've replaced benches, repaired a lot of benches. We upgraded the existing flower pots, and they're going to be doing next month or so some more upgrades as the spring season comes on. Replaced the American flag. Uh, replaced the American flags. We've also power washed the entire area, starting at Ring Avenue all the way up to Alter at 19. We'll be replacing one tree. There is one tree along Tarpon Avenue that does have to replace is in front of Amazing Finds. Uh, that, that, uh, project will start sometime in about two weeks. Once we coordinate along with the, uh, the tree company that's gonna help us take it down. There's power lines there in buildings. So, we're gonna do it with the outside contractor and then, of course, excavate the rooting system and the stump and replace it with a, with a tree that, uh, that fits properly there. Of course, some of the challenges we have on that, much like we have on, uh, Tarpon Avenue, uh, on, uh, Hibiscus, is getting power to all the tree wells. That's gonna be the, the main challenge and maybe a lot tougher than I originally thought, to be honest with you. Craig Park, we have done some work down at Craig Park. We poured new concrete in front of the ban shell. That came along very nicely. If anyone's got a chance, take a look at it. And we do have some seawall repairs and, uh, that's on tonight's agenda. And hopefully that goes forward and that, uh, those repairs get done. Dorset Park, we've done, rebuilt the baseball field at Dorset Park. If anyone's got a chance, go out there and take that. We're very proud of that. We include new clay, fencing, new dugouts, irrigation, sod and drainage improvements. And we reconfigured the field so we can use it for all sorts of different, uh, softball, baseball, all the way up to senior ball. That means the baselines and everything else. So everyone should be really come out good. I'm very proud of the project we do there. We did there.
We got a lot of thank yous at the MLK at the end of the parade. We got a lot of thank yous, um, at the park, uh, after the parade about Dorset Park and the condition of it.
It come out, well, we're very proud. We'll do some other upgrades there as we go along. Uh, Sisler Field is the other park we've been working on. Leonard Field and Rennick Field are scheduled for the same type of, uh, ballpark renovation we did out at Dorset. They'll be done after the end of the season. It was hard for us to do it, uh, prior to the start of the season. We couldn't guarantee that the sod would be ready. But we are scheduled and we're using Dorset Park, of course, as our, uh, as our basis of how we did, uh, we're gonna do these two fields. We're also doing that restrooms. We're working on the restrooms now at, uh, Dorset, at Sisler Field. They should be done in the next month or so. Uh, we also purchased the home at 901 Bayou. So we'll, uh, be demoing that in the next couple of weeks and then I'll come back with a plan to beautify that area, extend the parking for the park, and hopefully just shield it from our neighbors. We wanna, we wanna make sure we're good neighbors. Uh, Splash Park, we're working on Splash Park. Maintenance upgrades, it's shut down for next couple of months, I think the end of February, fall, something like that. Uh, but we're redoing all the, uh, uh, swings, the slides and all within the, or the water area itself. And then we're reconfiguring the parking lot and upgrading the landscaping there. Sunset Beach, uh, Sunset Beach will be getting a new observation deck. Uh, we've had issues with that over the years. Everyone's seen it, uh, but that will be concrete, but we'll be putting a different type of cool decking on top of it. Uh, and that project will start right after we complete the library at the, uh, the restroom remodeling that we're now presently doing at the library. Uh, we're gonna also replace the kiosk at Sunset Beach and, uh, as you, if you happen out there, we recently added some additional parking, which came out very well. We've got a lot, a lot of perks on that. All the parks will be installing, uh, this year, probably sometime in the spring. I'll be coming back with, uh, installing new park, uh, entrance gates, uh, go to electric type of gates, away from the, the manual opening and closing. And I'll come out with, uh, some recommendations on, uh, Sunset Beach too. Maybe a whole new entryway there. Looking into that. Looking into that. Uh, other things we have going on, uh, Discovery Park, uh, we're remodeling restrooms, uh, this fall, or this spring, I should say. Heritage Museum's just completed three new office spaces inside. Library, we're in the middle of new, uh, restroom remodeling. Uh, the Train Depot will have railings and deck upgrades, uh, and also we just finished doing a, uh, stormwater, uh, storm gutter replacement there. Other projects, I'll get it your way here. Uh, City Hall will be adding a kiosk inside the building here off of Ring Avenue, so people have an opportunity when they come to a performance, they'll be able to read exactly what's happening in city and, and join the performances and also we'll put other information, maps and whatever information is, is available. Other project we just completed was South Distant Avenue. We ran all new, uh, trees from South Distant Avenue, the entire length. It's really made a big change out there, uh, and they're growing in very nicely. The other project we're working on is Pinellas Ave. This one's another, uh, challenge from, uh, Orange Street down to Dodecanese, uh, trying to put trees in those tree wells, replacing existing ones. We've run into some complications. FDOT will not allow trees within five feet of the front of curb, which is asking us then to move any type of tree wells into, uh, outside the right of way. So we're working on trying to get either right of entries or right of ways into adjoining property owners, so you can put some trees in there. Uh, any trees that do get damaged due to traffic or just die naturally cannot be replaced. So, uh, it's gonna take, it's again, another challenge, but we'll get there. Uh, and last but not least, uh, we were doing some resurfacing. The board was kind enough to approve my paving list, uh, last month and hopefully I'll have that out in the street in the next, uh, 30 days and we'll be getting some paving done.
Thank you for the update.
And we'll go ahead as each one comes up, if you wanna have any questions about this project.
Well, I was going to, uh, comment and, uh, the library. I'd like to congratulate all the employers that you have working there, working on this project. And this is an in-house project. Our employees are doing it. And they're doing an excellent job, so if you please give it my thanks, I appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
Another thing that I want to, on the South Distant Avenue, we begin complaints that, uh, is there any way that we can, uh, slow down the traffic? Do you have any ideas that will, that'd be helpful?
You're talking to the wrong person there.
Yeah.
I'm not talking to the wrong person. Do you have any ideas?
We've, well, beautification of the, of the trees should help somewhat. Uh, we did try a couple of years ago, trying to narrow the lanes down by pulling the striping on the streets. It hasn't been an exact, uh, improvement. It's gotten better. We did add speed limit signs alongside the way, the flashing of signs to tell you how, how fast you're going. May, maybe, uh, we'll have to look back at either a traffic engineer or I'll sit down with the police department and, and come up with some other ideas, but there's a lot of challenges on that right of way and, and not, not all of them will work. You have a lot, you have a lot of interacting streets over here that, that make it very difficult on how you handle the traffic.
So by changing the design of the street, maybe it will help them?
It possibly could, but we'll need to study on that. An, a traffic study, actually, to take a look at that.
Okay. Uh, you have mentioned about, uh, the demolition of the, the house we just purchased on 901 Bayou.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be in-house in regards to the, uh, designing of the parking and all that?
As far as the parking, we'll do all that in-house. The demolition is contracted out. But no, the, the, uh, the actual design, I'll, we'll put something together with my parks people and come up with a design and, and present it.
The, uh, the tennis court on Riverside Drive, what do you plan to do there?
Uh, we're gonna complete, up, up, uh, upgrading the lights. We upgraded some lights last year. We'll complete that this year. And probably in a couple of years down the road, we'll have to replace the entire surface. It's getting old and we repaired many of the cracks and spots in it, but, uh, it's, it's getting close to being a new, new surface.
Because you've done some repairs not long ago.
Yes, we have. We did it last year. We did it, filled in all the cracks, repainted it, restriped it. But the asphalt there is about 20 years old, so it's getting close to a new surface.
I want to ask you a question now related to the, uh, things that you, uh, you, you talked about. Uh, but this is a project that you're working on. Do you have any update that you can give us on the check valve installation on, on the spring stuff?
Sure. We, uh, we put the one in on, on Bay Shore and Sunset. That went in, um, it was interesting, you know, it's a project we've never done before. Uh, we have the experience, but we never put anything in like this. That first one's always the biggest challenge. Uh, we had a stormwater engineer review as we were putting it in and, uh, they've come up with a, uh, a scope and, and, uh, on how to put the system together. Uh, we've monitored for the last, I guess about six or eight weeks now. It seems to be working as, as advertised, uh, but I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. Who never knows? The better, the best test will be in the, in the, in the spring, summer, when the, when the heavy rains come. But we are finishing up a scope now to put the other three, uh, valves in, uh, on Dodecanese, one at, uh, Dodecanese and Athens, one at, uh, Ferris and the third one down by where the restrooms are at Hope Street.
Well, thank you. Thank you. You're welcome. Vice Mayor Banther, you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Tom, for, for the updates. Some of these projects we've been talking about for many years to be done, so it's finally, we're seeing some progress and I, I do appreciate it. And I know these were all done, these are being done in-house
Yes.
by our own city staff, so, um, please, please be sure to thank them. I know they work really hard. Um, you know, I drive around town and I see these guys working all the time and they work very hard for us. I had a question, which wasn't on here. Were there any, is there any more thought about additional, uh, boat parking at Craig Park? Remember we discussed that and I don't know where that's gone?
Uh, not, not at the present time. Again, it's, when you do add boat parking, that means you get more boats, so we end up having the same problem. But, uh, no, at the present time, we haven't brought anything up quite yet.
Okay, and then we had discussed also putting some more, um, cleats along the seawall there. Because I know we put, we put in that floating dock, which thank you for that, but, you know, it's kinda not what I was looking for, but
We, we can add some more cleats.
If we can get some more cleats out there, um, it would help with people that are loading and unloading. Because it does get busy in the summertime.
You got it.
And Sisler Field, I know, will be done. So the season's getting ready to get started at Sisler Field. So you're saying we're going to wait to do the improvements?
Yes, uh, I had a meeting with Little League, uh, in the fall, right after the fall season on the improvements. Uh, and we weren't sure, because you never guess what the weather's gonna be in the winter time. And if we had started a project at this time, we couldn't guarantee that the sod would be set inside the outfield. So they agreed, uh, that would be best if we do it in, in, in the end of the season, which would be sometime around end of May, depending if they go to districts or not.
Right.
Uh, so we have everything in place to start that, just waiting for the calendar, pretty much.
And then the house that we just demolished there that we bought, so that's gonna be additional parking. And when will we start? I drove by it today and I couldn't
Yeah, they haven't demolished it yet. It's under contract.
Okay.
But there was some, you know, typical thing we do demolition, you gotta schedule it and, uh, we'll get down probably in the next couple of weeks. Uh, between now and then, I should have a, a, a design, a plan for the parking.
Right.
Uh, because I want to maintain as many trees there as, again, there's some beautiful oak trees on that.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit of challenges. And I like to move the entrance, entrance off of, uh, Meers Boulevard and then put it on Bayou. Just use the one entrance there. I think that would be better for the flow and be less that hill coming up onto My, Meers is, is, uh, is shaky at best, so I'll look at that.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be a great asset out there, um, anything to help with the parking situation, because people park all over the commu, the streets over there when, when there's ball games going on. But again, um, you know, I'm really happy to see Sunset Beach is, uh, being cleaned up a little bit. I know it's, it's tricky out there. Is there anything we can do? Well, we did the pavilions, right?
Yes.
We, we worked on the boat ramp. We put more parking out there. What about like, this came up during, um, a discussion recently, um, the roads out there, you know, it's all dirt road out there. So, you know, when it rains, all of a sudden potholes again. So constantly have to send, send city crew out there to fix it.
Uh, we, uh, we actually added a, a driving aisle last year. The first one closest to the beach. Put a concrete driving aisle down the middle and left the parking areas gravel. Eliminated the, all the potholes along there. The second row way doesn't have it and that's planned for the spring too, to put that drive aisle in. So you'll be able to come into the beach and do a complete loop and never get off of concrete.
Good.
We'll eliminate that.
I mean, I hate to see concrete out there, but again, you know, it's just kind of
Well, to help with that, we, we actually, I know you want the concrete, because we want impervious surface, but we upgraded the, the, behind the new parking, we upgraded some stormwater in there. And we also did the pond that is on the north side, upgraded that and it's been working like a charm, so.
Good, okay. Well, again, thank you and please make, thank your staff as well.
I will.
Commissioner Silver?
Thanks, Tom, for the update and, and everything you're working on. I just came back from Winter Park about a week ago and we were talking about beautification and lighting and they have all their poles, uh, lit, which we talked about maybe doing on the sponge docks, but it looked beautiful and a lot of the trees were lit too. So I look forward to moving forward with some of that lighting. Um, and the other question I had, you talked about resurfacing and paving. Do you know when the paving or resurfacing will be done on some of those alleys?
Uh, they'll be all part of the, the citywide paving list. I'm working on just some, some specifications so we get out in the street. Uh, so hopefully I have it ready in the next few weeks and probably sometime end of February, beginning of March, depending on the schedules.
All right. Yeah, I was specifically, uh, thinking about the alley behind South Spring between Lime and Bay Street.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I talked to a very nice lady who lives back over there. We're on board with that.
Spoken to you several times about it because of the handicapped child there, so.
I'll make that a priority. As soon as I get it all together, we'll make sure they maybe get there first, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Corr?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thanks for the update. That's one heck of a list that your team's done over the past few months. Uh, you did leave off the, the pressure washing of all the sidewalks in downtown Pinellas Avenue. So, uh, they look great. Um, I think that's something that we need to do, at least on a recurring schedule, so thank you for doing that. I do see the efforts that are being done in downtown with the additional flower pots and the benches and that's good to see. I've got some comments publicly also from, uh, the residents. I asked you to look at the trees that were, um, west of the bike trail. We do need to look at a couple of them that are east of the bike trail as well. Uh, I believe it's like in front of the Hair Salon and Ella's Boutique. Um, there's a couple of trees that are right there and then we'll connect about a couple of them that I think were missed. But we could follow up on that. The lights in downtown, the trees, uh, I sent you and Mark a couple of options out of Sullivan and Hyde Park. And then also I noticed someone's doing some lighting on Safford with like some red uplights into the tree canopies. And I think we might need to get creative because with the LED lights that have been added into downtown,
Right.
there's a heck of a lot more light in downtown now. When I drove down there, I was like, I feel like I was on a TV show or something. There was a light all over the place, so, um, I think we can need to maybe get creative on how, if it's a different color light that we use, if it's an uplight of some sort, if it's how we do this, if they're globes or whatever they may be. But we could, I think, talk a little bit further about that one as well. So thank you for the update. Couple other things I want to touch real quick. I'm excited to learn more about Sunset Beach's, um, projects, so please, if you could keep me in the loop of that. I like being updated as that's moving forward.
Those main parts there at Sunset Beach, uh, we're doing the restrooms too. It's all gonna start probably right after we finish the library restrooms. We have to move that portable restroom out there to shut down out there, so.
Sure. From Pinellas Avenue to Orne, I'm sorry, Pinellas Avenue, Orange Street to Livock or Dodecanese area, you brought up there's some struggles. And I mentioned to, to Mark and I believe in an email, I don't know if I included you or not. We had that one test, um, hanging basket that could hold, um, a water reservoir and that could be a potential alternative. I'm not sure for trees potentially, um, in a short term. I'm not, we could talk about that also.
Right.
A little bit more, look at an alternative to get a little more creative, because if they say you can't add a tree within five feet, maybe we could add a, a light post or another post of some sort, I'm not sure, so.
Yeah, there's, there's some challenges out there. We can adjust those, all right? We looked at them, but unfortunately, this, this time of season between all the, all the other stuff going on, it was
Um, yeah, I'm not saying do it tomorrow. So, yeah, I'm happy to discuss more about it. And then the marina, I know it's on the, the subject for later tonight. Uh, I believe the guy's name's Mick. He's one of our employees.
Yes, he is, yes.
Um, I met with him this, this weekend when I was down in the sponge docks. I drove through the sponge docks just to check things out and to see how things are going. And, um, he does a really good job with the curb appeal of the marina from potted plants to the top areas that are out front to other things going on. And I, I don't know if we could leverage him and some other areas of town as well. Um, it's not my responsibility to manage your staff or whoever he reports to, but I think there's an opportunity. He's got a gifting, it looks like, to to make things look nice. And we've got some areas that could, that need a little bit of a facelift, um, from a planting or flowers or potted plant. So I think we should try to leverage him, um, in a way that we can and
Tom already has my permission to do that, because I already told the same thing to him, so he has my permission to do that.
Yeah, we, we do that. We try to balance them, but I don't want to penalize one area to help the other area. So it's, it's a balancing act, but we, we definitely, he's a very talented man, no doubt about it.
Yeah, he does a good job and I think it looks really good. So thank you for the update and we really appreciate you, uh, and your career. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Oh, Mayor, I have one other question if I could. As I was, sorry, Tom.
That's okay.
As I was coming here tonight, Safford Avenue from, uh, MLK all the way up, up to wherever I, I don't know, Tarpon Avenue. The, the lights, they're all different, like, remember we went through this down at the, the Bayou? They're different colors, so there's different
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk on that. Uh, we actually have a new, we, uh, Commissioner Carr here and I talked a while back about putting a new light at the intersection of MLK and that's happening. Duke Energy is working on that. But yeah, there's all those globes, globes have to be replaced and I don't know if they've been by there in the last couple of weeks. We've already started that with repainting the poles. Same exact style that we have down the rest of the trail from around, from, uh, Safford Avenue to Tarpon and up Tarpon Avenue, the same, the same globes. Uh, so we're working on that now, but hopefully in the next six months, they're all done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom. The next update is on the wayfinding signs. Commissioner Corr? The next update is on the wayfinding signs, Commissioner Corr?
Yes, Karen Lemon will be taking this portion.
At our last update, we talked about um, replacing these wayfinding signs and the Public Works staff created a template that will look substantially like this. Color will be a little bit different. Well, they did their best to, to put a sample together to show you how the white will work with the dark background. They're gonna get out to bid, we're putting the specs together now. There are eighty-three of these. So we have been working hard at going through and looking at the placement, where we might need to replace some, where we need to add some or take some away. There are some areas of the city where the placement of them have been an issue, trucks have hit them and things like that. So that's taken some time to go through and look at where they're all placed and whether we can just replace the existing ones. So we're working on that. Uh, we're putting the specs together. There are three types of signs. There's the trailblazing signs, which are the large ones that point you to major directions like US nineteen downtown or the docks. Then there are the directional signs, which point you to um, shops, Craig Park, Splash Park, smaller locations. And then there are the pedestrian signs that have the business map locations on them. Then there are parking signs and some additional other signs. So there's, there's quite a few of these. You probably don't realize how many there are in the city. So as soon as we get the specs together, we're gonna refine the font. We're gonna be changing the font, making it a little bit bigger. Again, this is just a template. Just to give you an idea of, of the colors on them and putting them out to bid and then we'll be able to put them up. The Public Works staff is going to do the in-house installation of them. So we'll have the signs fabricated. We already have the poles. We already have the locations for them, so the um, the staff can do the installation themselves. So it, that'll take some cost off of, you know, what a brand new wayfinding system would have cost us.
But it's definitely something that's gonna have to be phased. Um, as you see with all the projects, we're, we're not gonna have with all the, when you see the future ones. So we'll look at the cost, what we can do in-house, but it's probably gonna have to be a phased, phased-in project with these signs, so.
Well, I wanna thank you for doing that. Um, and I was concerned about uh, you know, the fonts, how small they are. But when it, they need to be larger, so be able to see when you're driving by.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we wanted to work on. So we've got somebody working out different types of fonts and, and the sizes.
Okay. Do we have any idea how long it will take for this project to be completed?
I would say it'll be several months. That's my best guess.
Okay. Well, thank you. Commissioner Carr, you got any questions, Tom?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I do think the colors are good with the darker blue and then the white lettering. The, the letters definitely need to be larger from like what the prototype is that's here. Uh, I'm not sure where this sign would be hanging, if it'd be on, is this, is this like for pedestrians or is this for cars that would be driving?
This is for cars.
It's for cars, okay. Yeah, that, I definitely would recommend this, a stronger, bigger uh, lettering on that overall. But uh, I'm happy to see this moving forward. I know uh, this is an area that um, a lot of residents have asked about and pointed out, the old faded signs, so thank you. Uh, if I can make another recommendation too, I mentioned it to Mark in the past. The poles that these are hung on, uh, what we could do, cause also the city of Clearwater's got some neat options um, that they have in their poles, wayfinding poles. Uh, with some type of art, if it's a palm tree, if it's a flying heron, or if it's a sunset and it's made out of bronze and it's attached to the pole. So it's a way to incorporate some art also with the signage and the wayfinding signs. And I've sent you some pictures, I believe, uh, on email. And another thing we would probably wanna do is just do a um, the poles are also like a faded black. We may want to do like a high gloss coat on them when the city staff's going, getting ready to install these. Just to do a fresh paint on the pole as well. Uh, and then if we, I mean, if the topper needs to be replaced, we can replace the topper too, so thank you for the update.
Pretty much what Commissioner Carr said. Thank you for the presentation and I'm looking forward to these being done and so everybody can see where they're going and what they're looking for. Thank you.
Vice President.
Thank you. Um, thanks Karen for bringing this to us. Um, yeah, definitely the um, the letters definitely need to be bigger. But these are, this alone is an improvement of what we have now. I remember when we did the wayfinding quite a few years ago, those signs, we couldn't read them from day one. You know, the, the background was too light and then the white on top of it and, and then they faded, you know, over the years, so it's obviously gotten worse. But I mean, from day one, they, they just were not, wasn't a good plan. So I, I like this a lot better and the darker background I think will help as well. So I look forward to these being completed. Thank you.
Mayor, I just have one more comment. Uh, Karen, I know we've talked about this a lot of times, but uh, along with these signs, as I said, I was in Winter Park. And uh, and other communities who have signs that say what the businesses are on that block. Um, and we've talked about this and doing something, working with the merchants to do their own decal and us put the signs up. I'd like to, to move forward with that in some way and, and have some more further discussion, because I see that in so many communities when I drive around outside of this area. Where you actually know that there's an ice cream store down the street or a spice shop or whatever it is. And it can help direct people to those, to those businesses.
Yeah, I know, we've talked about that and we can look at that. There are um, nine of these that have the business directories on them downtown and the docks. It's with a map where he says where you are and it'll, it shows all the businesses. There's nine of them like this. But we also talked about freestanding something at the docks or downtown.
You know, whatever the stores are down at, at, you know, either Athens and down Athens Street, because that's sometimes an area that gets neglected. Down the west end of the docks, uh, the beginning of uh, where our Ferris is, so that people know in, in this block, we have these restaurants and, and these stores that we can visit. And just know that there's stores in other areas that are not as visited.
Right.
I would like to discuss that again with you. And you, Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
A lot's gonna depend with these, with, let's say the first quarter project, obviously they go more, but a lot of, a lot is gonna be what the cost of these to see what we have, what we have left. So that's why I say we may need to phase these when we start getting to the actual prices of where the prices are and what money we got. You know, we'll have a better idea what these initial set of projects are gonna cost. And then you can prioritize, all right, we got this pot of money left, so maybe the priority for the next sign is those type of signs. And, and you as a board will decide, okay, there's a lot of different signs we're gonna be trying to do around, but what type of ones, we've got this much left. And uh, that'll be your decision to decide where we go after we see the cost of these ones we're working on now. And then you can prioritize which ones you want next as a board and, and as the commissioner.
Yeah, I just feel like it's important to support our business owners and they've been asking for this. We do have them downtown, but I know on the docks, uh, there aren't any business signs. And so they would like, you know, some kind of signage down there.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I support what Commissioner Seaver was talking about. Uh, I know we're, to talk about budget is always an exciting thing, but we're looking at the next budget coming up here soon. And um, the signage is with the, uh, I guess you would call them the ancillary signs or the secondary signs in the historic district. Um, that could also have the, the black and then if um, if we don't have the budget this year, if we could look at budgeting it for next year for these other signs that Commissioner Seaver is talking about. For uh, boutiques, breweries, um, shops, whatever it may be. Um, at least keep it on the list and keep it going in the forefront.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
I took pictures again at Winter Park, if you need ideas, like other pictures I've, I've given you before. Uh, which is, I think, very uh, useful for visitors, because they know if they go down that street, there's gonna be an ice cream shop or a spice store or a wine store or whatever it is. And uh, you know, it, it, you know, directs people towards, you know, those businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Infrastructure projects is next.
Yes, Paul Smith. We got a brief update on the sewer, sewer treatment, water treatment plant, plant project.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. I'd like to start off with a, a project in sewage collection. These are the pipes and pumping systems that bring the wastewater into our centralized treatment plant. And this project's uh, has to do with sewer system improvements of lining the pipes and the manholes. And we've identified a major project along Safford Avenue that we wanna get started. It's about a half a mile of pipe that we wanna reline, sewer pipe, a twelve inch sewer pipe. And um, it's gonna be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that. I've calculated, that's about one-tenth the cost of if you went in and tried to replace it, never mind the disruption to the community. But um, I think it's something that we've done some work around this sewer line and we've seen firsthand that it's showing its age. And um, I think it's a prudent thing to go in and take care of that now. So you'll see a, a memo coming up at a meeting soon, um, requesting that, that project to be approved. Moving along to Seabreeze Drive, this is new sewer construction that we're planning. Uh, we're into our detailed design phase now. The Project Administration Department with Bob Robertson is gonna be taking the project into public communication and getting that detailed design information. This will require the surveyors to actually go out and interact with each of the houses to measure um, their sewer service elevation. So that we make sure this design works for the homeowners and that'll be starting soon. So um, we've carefully reviewed this information to be going out and hopefully it'll be overall a positive project for us. We expect the design to be complete sometime around the end of this year and then construction starting in twenty twenty. Moving on to um, Sewage Treatment Plant, one of the major projects we have there is the internal recycle pump upgrade. If you think about, these pumps are sort of like the heart of the treatment plant. They recirculate the water through the various process tanks to make them uh, achieve the treatment that they do. We've purchased these pumps already. We're preparing to install them. Um, just a quick background on that, we generally rebuild pumps several times. And usually after the third rebuild, we'll go ahead and buy new at that point, because they've really stretched every bit of life out of them that we can. The water treatment plant, we have the future raw water wells. We have three new wells that are gonna be in construction. We estimate about nine months for that all to be complete. That's um, constructing the wells, connecting them with the pipes and installing the control systems above ground that'll um, control the flow and bring it into the RO facility. And finally, at the water treatment plant, the RO solar project is out for proposals right now. We expect those back by February twelfth. And uh, we're hopeful that we'll get some good proposals, that we can come to you and recommend something. It's our goal to do that uh, sometime in February or early March. So those are the projects I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, I wanna thank you for studying the um, the solar project at the RO plant. I think it's gonna be good for the environment as well. Everybody can see how concerned that we are about the environment. Question I wanna ask you is, we budgeted five hundred thousand dollars to replace the water pipe. Uh, can you tell us when we're gonna start this project and if we, what area have we identified that we're going to do?
Yes. Um, we're starting those as we speak. In fact, there's an item on the agenda tonight that identifies a contract to renew, to continue doing that sort of work. Some examples are um, in the Dixie Highway area, we need to relocate some pipes as part of a, a road project out there that the county's undertaking. That would be included in our water pipe work. We also have some reclaimed water extensions that are going on. One of them is on Kimberly Lane. And um, those are the few examples I can think of off the top of my head, but that project's moving forward as it does each year.
Yeah. I was just wondering about these old pipes that we have in the old section of the town where it wouldn't start replacing.
Yes. I do know we have a few projects identified in that area and I can bring you some more information on that.
Commissioner Kikka, any questions, comments?
Uh, yes, thank you. I, Paul, could you just um, talk a little bit about the solar that you mentioned, we're expanding solar out there?
Yes, uh, this will be a new solar project out there. We don't have any at the RO plant at this time. But um, it's quite a large project. We're hoping to produce um, somewhere eventually in the two hundred kilowatt range, which is a lot of power. That can make a significant difference in our energy bill. And uh, what we're doing is looking for proposals right now. This is where they'll come in with the latest technology and ideas. We give them a budget and they tell us what they can do with that budget. So uh, once we get those proposals, I'll have more information on what the project might look like out there. We've identified a few areas to start. As you come in the plant, that whole area along the northern fence line is ideal, because it's not shaded by the building or anything like that. It will provide a very good southern exposure, which is what you want for a solar, uh, solar energy collection.
Awesome. Well, great, thank you.
You're welcome. What I like about it is there's not very many water plants that have RO, our um, solar systems on site. So this would be really a feather in our cap.
Yeah, that's great. Great to hear. Yes, please keep us posted on that.
Will do.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, um, no, 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 no questions, but, but just thank you, Paul, for always keeping deal with the, the water plant and on the forefront of things and solar and whatnot. And uh, uh, I look forward to, uh, to our, 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 our RO plant winning more, 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 more awards in the future, so thank you.
No comments, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I know sewer and wastewater isn't the most attractive uh, thing to talk about. But you guys do a great job and the example we just used where you're talking about resurfacing the inside of the pipes and the technology that we're, that you're using. Thank you so much for figuring that out, because obviously we could spend our dollars elsewhere or continue to resurface more and more pipes uh, for the longevity of our infrastructure and that's really important. So you guys have done a really good job in your department, really. I always enjoy visiting the RO plant and uh, talking about the projects and the replacement times and other aspects. So uh, thanks for the update and um, looking forward to talking some more about some other areas of town.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanna emphasize on that subject, that's one of the things that's forgotten a lot of times about, you know, what we have done the past ten years with past commissions, with many of you who's been on the commissions. And our attention we've taken to that infrastructure. Um, that's one of the things forgotten when you talk about, you know, when you talk about different things, what's going on. But obviously, all of you know that what we've done proved when the storm come through, cause we've been, you know, there's a lot of comparing of other cities these days. Take the comparison of what we dumped into the environment with the other cities in this county and see where we're located. Cause we dump the fewest, a minuscule amount and, and when everybody's looking at what's going on and looking, that is ten years of work. Many commissions, look at the commissions it's on, continuously doing these projects. Yes, we had some high rates for a while, but we had old infrastructure. If we didn't have those high rates for ten years, which you as a board kept your promise and reduced them after we did those projects. We would be with some of those other cities dumping, dumping tons of, of waste into our environment and a lot of that didn't happen here. And again, I'm having Paul find those, cause I think we need to put it out and remind everybody. When they did the council, what was dumped on all the cities, we shown at the top, we were a leader in, in not dumping into the environment. And that's a result of ten years of hard work by this commission, by Paul and the staff to do such things as reline and get our old infrastructure up to things. So we don't get any accolades for it and stuff, but the proof of the pudding was when that storm came and what happened in the cities in this county.
Well, I have to say thanks to Paul's leadership since he's been, come aboard. Um, really, I've seen, I, you know, a lot of residents complain all the time about our infrastructure, but it has come a long way since you've been around. And I, I do appreciate everything you've done, Paul.
Well, that means a lot. I just wanna say we've got a great team though and I do thank you for saying that.
Mr. Smith, not only that he uh, serving the seat of Tarper Springs and he's helping our, our plan here, but he's also on the advisory board on the county level. So we worked on that. Thank you very much for serving there as well and providing your expertise to the other cities. Thank you.
Bob Robertson will be taking the next three?
Five, six and seven.
Good evening, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and I'll give you an update, a very brief update on three projects. The first is city entryway signage. Um, Nick McRus in my office has been researching requirements and costs for gateway signs. Um, that would be located in FDOT rights of way. We've learned that FDOT will require a permit for such signs. They will require engineered plans and specifications. And the signs will need to have the ability to break away in a vehicle crash. That means that they must be made of destructible materials. So of course, brick would not be acceptable. But there are faux brick facades, structural foam, and other options that are available that can still meet the desired aesthetic. For signs like that, costs would range between about, excuse me, $7,500 to $15,000 per sign, depending on the size of the sign. But that cost includes the engineering and the installation. So moving forward, the next step would be to put together an overall action plan, evaluate costs, phasing, much like was talked about with the wayfinding signs, and see how that would work into overall budgets. That's a brief update on that one. Okay.
I've got a question, or do we wait till the end?
Yeah, we wait.
Okay.
Want to do the next one? Okay. So the next one I'll touch on is the school zone safety corridor. This is another one that I've had Nick McRus in my office working on. He worked closely with Pinellas County to improve the school zone, the school zones along Gulf Road. Previously was two separate zones and was very confusing about when one school zone started and one school zone ended. So now it's one continuous zone, which helps avoid confusion. New signage has been placed, new crosswalks have been placed, flashing beacons, all in with the goal of avoiding confusion for motorists, parents, students, et cetera, and getting to and from school, allowing no gray areas for law enforcement as well, where school zones begin and end. So with this one wrapping up, we're looking to start researching ways we can improve the Levis Corridor near Tarpon Springs Elementary School next. And that's a brief update on that one.
Plus, Nick is coordinating the county on some other crosswalks. Some crosswalks has been brought to our attention by Commissioner Carr. Some other ones we've talked and talked about there on the county roads out there. Obviously, school was the number one priority. We need to get that done first. Hopefully, we can work with them and some of their streets and get some more crosswalks for some more walkabilities while we're doing the streets that we need to take care of because there are streets for walkabilities. So Nick is coordinating the point person with the county, along with Tom Function, and, and working on now doing maybe some additional crosswalks on some of the other county roads. But again, the school took priority and that's what we wanted to make sure we got done first. It'd been nice to get it before school, but, you know, we got it done and it looks good.
Okay, moving on.
Mango Street.
Mango Mears. So I can briefly update you on two sections of Mears Boulevard that are in the works here. The first section between Safford and Distin is the part that the contractor for the Mears Town Center will be building. This will be a new roadway section and their design engineer is working to include two additional turn lanes that we, the city requested last year. My understanding from the developers that they are currently working through a bidding process, an internal bidding process, to hire their roadway builder. And should have, we should have a better idea of the contractor's schedule within a few weeks when that process is complete. So I'll continue to keep my website project update, updated with new information as it comes in. And then the second section of that road is the section that's Mango Street between Distin and US-19. This project is an upgrade to an existing roadway segment that will connect the first section that I talked about just now to make a continuous connection between Alt-19 and US-19. This section is currently under design by the city's engineering consultant and they're about 50% complete. They have identified a way to reduce construction costs by merging some stormwater treatment ponds with privately owned ponds. We're currently working to set up maintenance and access agreements for this usage. And so far, it seems like this is going to be the best solution to alleviate any stormwater concerns on that road. So that touches on the two pieces of the Mears Boulevard project. Are there any questions?
Yeah, well, thank you. On the signs you're talking about, they have to be breakable. Are they going to be strong enough to be able to, if it's a plastic, to be able to sustain those high winds?
Yeah, and it will have to be. They'll have to be designed to handle the hurricane wind loads.
And what about cost? Is that going to be about the same or is it going to be more expensive by having it designed that way?
Well, those costs I quoted you were for a system that could meet exactly what we just said. And what you're asking me is, will it meet, will it have the breakaway ability but still meet wind load and look nice? And that's what those prices were.
The other question that I have on the improvements that you did on the, on the school zone, is the county going to pay all these expenses being that it's under their jurisdiction?
I think we worked out an agreement with them where we did some of the concrete improvement work, but they provided the signage and the labor for the painting. Most of the work was county, but it was more of a city initiative. So we contributed a little bit to make it, to kind of make it go. It was a good collaborative effort. Yeah, it was a good partnership.
The other, on the Mango Street between Mango and US-19, between Distin and US-19, on the upgrades that you're going to do, I'm going to ask you if you get, if you work with the Stonehead people and see if they got any concerns with the gate to open.
I've not heard any concerns about that, but, but we can certainly ask.
Yeah, if you please give a call, Tony, and ask him if he has any concerns.
Certainly.
Thank you. Commissioner Seber?
Thanks, Tom, for the update. And I'm really looking forward to, I mean, Bob, Tom, is he gone?
You're welcome.
And all of you for your great leadership and you always with your forward thinking as well as Paul and, and Tom. I'm looking forward to that Mears project coming to an end.
Yeah.
So we can connect all the way to, to US-19. I do have a question. I don't know if you remember about four months ago in a special session, I asked about an update on South Spring from the Army Corps of Engineers. And I know we're going to get to South Spring later. But I would still like to see that we have some kind of valuation out there because it's been quite a while since we've done that project or that project was done. And maybe they can either report to the board or we can see, you know, from them what, what they're evaluating or suggesting or seeing whether anything does be, does need to be done. We've had the worst flooding I've ever seen this past summer on, on South Spring. And I think it's, it could potentially bring the property values down. So I think that's a very important issue to, to look into.
Okay.
And I look forward to you giving us an update on that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a quick question and maybe we could bring this up to FDOT. Clearwater's got like a massive monument sign on the Courtney Campbell Causeway as you're heading westbound on the right. It's like their centennial sign. And it's definitely not breakable if you hit it. So I would question that. And then maybe if we could look at, is there an alternative to putting some type of guardrails? A terrible word to use in this situation, but something along the lines of like a guardrail that's a decorative or maybe something we could hide with bushes that could help deflect a vehicle if a vehicle were to come towards the sign? Because I think having something like a sign made out of a brick or stone is first is going to last a lot longer, it's going to look a lot better than a faux brick of some sort. And I do understand that it needs to be breakable in the event that someone drives through it instead of just blows up their car. So I do have some concerns about that. And I'm not sure if we can get creative in some other ways of looking at those gateway signs because I think those are really going to have such an impact for when people come in. And if they're not made out of a brick or a stone, I just think we're going to be having the same conversation maybe 15 years from now.
Okay, I'm looking into it.
Thanks for the update in the school zone. Glad to encourage Mark over sometimes. And I know I'm not the only one that has to ask him to look at that area. But sitting on the Pinellas County School Safety Transportation Committee, it's always great to see some projects in Tarpon Springs. And then the city of Tarpon Springs take initiative for crosswalks and combining some school zones. So thank you for your team's help with, with that. I've driven by it a couple of times. It looks good. The new beacons that are flashing out there look well as well. And they also remind you if you're going over the speed limit. So thank you.
Flash, Mr. Ben?
Yes, thank you. And just thank you, Bob, the overall, this is my final, you know, you know, update from you. So thank you for all your years of help and work and everything, especially with the, with the, with the, with the dredge project.
You're welcome.
I, I, I very much like the additional school, school, school safety zone there. I live there and I'm, 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 I'm a very like aggressive driver, you would say. So it's reminded me to slow down and just makes sense to have consistent all the way through. The choppiness there makes, make, 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 makes no sense. You have kids walking all along there from Sunset Hills down to Jimmy's. So great, so that was, that was, that was a great job on that. And I, I, I would just ask, do you have more news on the, on the dredge project?
Will do.
Thank you. I have a question on the, the signage, the gateway signs. Wasn't that a project that the Art Committee was working on as well? Okay, so we're talking about the same, because we had directed them on what signs we've all chosen, what signs we liked. And so now we're being told that, so, okay, so. So they didn't look into what was allowed, not allowed before we gave them direction? What kind of material was allowed and not allowed before we gave direction? Is that correct?
Well, again, it was more of a style. Like I say, there's materials, like he said, to make it look like the brick.
Right.
But with it being, I mean, you know, we've met this over the years, FDOT. Yes, right, as you know, those entrance way signs are way off the road. But they're pretty clear, no matter how far off the road they are.
It's a safety issue. I agree with that. But my, my, it's just that, you know, you know, the, we keep sending that, that committee back to the drawing board and, and so many issues. It's like, maybe if, you know, now we're, you know, we're pushed back on this project because this wasn't thought about ahead of time, but, you know.
But try, and try to find for them.
By the committee.
We want to try to, try to find for them because other places have done the faux brick or however you call it and stuff. And it's hard. Try to find some pictures for the commission to see that it'll probably look, you know, a lot like the same way. Again, the problem is it's not going to last as long, that thing. But still, you can make the, you'd be surprised how many signs out there that look like they're made of certain materials aren't because of the DOT regulations. So I think when you see those pictures, I think the design and the, the picture that they painted can be reproduced. It's just not with, with, with those materials.
The materials, okay. But again, you know, maybe if they would have did some homework on what kind of materials we could use at the time it was presented to us, we wouldn't be, again, back to the drawing board on what, you know. It's just, it's just going to push us back on what we want. We, you know, we've been asking for new gateway signs. And so I'm just kind of disappointed in that. But I understand it is a safety issue. I honestly get that, but it's just, you know, we need, we need our signs to all match and, and, and look the same and, and have a nice feel coming into this community. And again, here we are, another project pushed back because I, I, I don't think some of the work that should have been done when it was presented to us in the beginning. I'm sorry, it just, it just gets frustrating. Okay, so explain to me this continuous zone, the, the school zone on Gulf Road. So you, I'm not driving out their door when they're, the buses are coming out. So I, Commissioner Carr, I'm glad that you went out there because I just, I'm not just going to sit in that traffic. But so is it like, because they get out at different times, right?
Right.
So can you explain to me?
Well, as someone said, I apologize, but you have students walking all along the whole stretch of Gulf Road to get to and from either school at either time. So the idea was to make the school zone extend basically between both schools so that you have a safe zone the entire stretch of Gulf Road.
So when, when the high school gets out, it's from where it starts, the high school all the way down past?
Right.
Okay, the elementary school.
Because you drive it, those kids go across all those.
I know, they're running all over the place. I had one, one child call me in elementary school. He's just the safety kid or whatever. And, and he called me about it. And he was concerned because kids are running everywhere. So I talked to, I believe I talked to chief. And the problem got corrected. So, but yeah, anything we can do to keep our, our children safe in, in any school zone that, that is very much needed. But again, so Commissioner Carr, you sit on that, the, the safety committee with the county, right? So did this come up in any of their meetings?
The wayfinding signs did, not necessarily the continuation of the whole stretch, but the new beacons and the new signage, that was part of the discussion that we're able to get.
Awesome.
The new signs paid for by the county.
Good, that's good to hear, that we're not forgotten. And the, thank you for that. And then the, the extension of Mango and Mears. I think I've been talking about that extension since 2008, since I ran for the first time. So hopefully we can get this completed. So are we waiting for the developer now to finish his portion first, their portion first?
We're not waiting on them. They're, they're going to do theirs when they do theirs and we're going to do ours when we do ours. And hopefully they match up. It looks like we're going to be pretty, pretty close. When they finish theirs, there'll still be a continuous connection. But ours is going to be an upgrade to an existing road, so.
Which you need.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
The next presentation is on security cameras. Chief Cottrell.
Thank you, Mayor. I place some information on the dais for each commissioner as I talk about what we're calling Phase One of our security camera system. So we're looking at the following areas. We're looking at Craig Park, Tarpon Avenue, West Tarpon Avenue through downtown to the intersection of Safford and Tarpon. We're also looking at Tarpon Springs Public Library and some of the city lots in between. We're also looking at covering the downtown bathrooms and the other city lot that would be in back of Tarpon Tavern. At this point, we've had our IT department and our public works department involved in this process and kind of scoping things out, looking at, you know, the best way to cover these areas. And what we're going to do now is we're pretty much, we have completed a scope for purchasing, to put out a bid. And we have the right to reject all bids, but we want to see what's out there. We, we want to see what's out there to cover this area, what types of systems are out there, who's offering what. So we get a better idea of, of where we need to go with this project. We definitely have an idea of what we want. We want high resolution cameras. We want, you know, we want this feed probably to come back to the police department and City Hall and IT. And the images will be recorded for a certain period of time. Obviously, with a project such as this, there's a lot of logistics involved from an IT perspective and also a hardware perspective and software perspective. So these are the areas that we're looking at. We're calling it Phase One. We hope to go out the bid soon. Again, we'll see what's out there and we'll keep you updated every step of the way. I'll be glad to take any questions.
I just want to thank you. This is something we've been waiting for a long time. Thank you so much. You, you called the Phase One, you expecting other phases to come?
Well, I think, I think we would look, obviously, if you look at every other city, you know, everyone's in this process of, you know, providing security cameras in areas. But yeah, I would think that in the future, we would definitely expand. But right now, we want to get, we want to get this right. And we think these are vital areas right now that we need to really focus on. So if we get a really good system in place and do it right, absolutely, I think we need to expand to other areas of the city.
With the RFP that you're going to issue, you're going to include the communication circuit as well?
I'm sorry, what, Mayor?
Going to include the communication circuit?
Correct, yeah, it would be the whole project. The scope basically is for someone to come in and do this whole project for us. And we'll see what's out there. Some may have solar, some may not be. Again, there are different systems out there, but we'll definitely get a great idea of what would be entailed when people start bidding on this.
Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess kind of piggyback to what, what the mayor asked. But is there any potential for extending it east to, I guess, Ring, which we one more block over? You know, like it stops around Safford, correct, right now? Bring it over, over to Ring?
Yeah, we can go a little, we're going a little beyond Safford, but close to Ring. But I don't know how far down we can get, we can actually get to Ring.
If, I think if possible, it would be nice. I know, I, 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 I know it's all budget restricted, of course. And we can always expand, I assume, too. It's not just one and done. But being that it's a more, you know, lively area now, which is a good thing, but with the bars, the breweries and whatnot, I think it'd be nice to have some coverage down there. And that's, you know, I kind of consider Ring the interest that, you know, it's throughout downtown. So if that's possible in this project, or at least for expansion, I think that would be nice. But that is a great project. I think it's going to help tremendously with, 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 you know, security and also enforcement with the, you know, one hotel that we still have left. So, 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 thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Bob. And I agree with the Vice Mayor. And I would like in the future for your next, hopefully, extension to include the sponge docks because there's activity down there, too. So in the future, if you can think about including other areas like the docks, would be great.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I would also echo Vice Mayor and Commissioner Seber. I know that we have a parking lot on Ring as well that was newly renovated. But I know you mentioned this is a Phase One. I do think it's important to have some type of. Um that was newly renovated, but uh I know you mentioned this is a phase one. I do think it's important to have some type of um surveillance or uh security cameras out. I know initial discussion was to have cameras put out at the s- uh city parks, and I know over the past few months, there's been some complaints about young women with children at parks being harassed people that shouldn't be in parks, basically. So I'm not sure what phase two would look like, but I do think it's important to have some type of security cameras in at the entrances, at least of all of our parks. And also uh maybe certain areas of our parks, just to make sure that when things like this do happen, that we've got record of it and we can follow up where we need to follow up.
I mean, I would think primary primary areas beyond this would include the sponge docks and city parks. I think those are definitely obvious areas that we need to focus on.
Yeah, those are definitely in our plans.
Right.
Um the purpose of the phase, first of all, is see what the technology is and what system we can get. Then we'll know better the cost, and then that's when I get with you is and we'll kind of know what the cost of that area is, so we'll know. But definitely, we need every city park, parking lot, the sunset be all of those covered in a si- covered in the system. Sponge docks, the the next major area to do. So once we do this, this project will tell us a lot. We need to know what we have to budget and what we have to look at and plan in the future to bring those other areas on. Again, I would say as soon as we can possibly bring them on.
Sure.
Because I think security is just vital and important, especially these days. There's no doubt.
It's an important thing to have, I think, as well. Mayor, I had a question for Paul Smith. I forgot to ask. Is it okay?
Any other questions to uh Chief Cottin before we? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Not to put you on the spot again, but uh the golf course entrance area, um is there any update on that, on progress or plans, uh planned timing or anything along those lines?
Yes, I've got Howard. Uh I've asked him to give me weekly updates at our staff meeting on how that's going. He's working with several departments to get the sign figured out. I know he's working with Nick McRus to get a unified format that'll work. I understand this frangible thing has come into play, being that it's right off of the DOT highway there, so. I'm sure they're gonna come up with a solution, but currently that's where it's at, is getting that sign concept nailed down. We got good input on what we need to do. It's just a matter of selecting that and moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to the public comments on the uh presentations. Are there any public comments? On all those things that were just presented to us? Here none? Well, thank you. We are now going to the concern agenda items. Number three is the satisfaction release of liens. Number four is the attorney fees. Traska dialogue invoice fifty-seven four sixteen. B is Johnson and Johnson invoice thirty uh eight fifty-one. Number five is the special events. Star uh gay scene party February twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. B is Hook Kids on Fishing, March second, two thousand nineteen. C is Easter um extra Kavanza, uh April thirteen, two thousand nineteen. Number six is the increased file number sixteen. Zero zero seventy-two CRS purchase of uh work uniforms through the seat of St. Petersburg contract fifty-nine sixty-eight. Number seven is the increased file number eighteen zero one seventy-eight CCM demolition and abatement services through Pinellas County. The number for that is one seven eight zero four two eight B A M. Number eight is the award file number nineteen zero zero fifty-four C J J Microsoft licensed maintenance and services through the state of Florida contract. Forty-three twenty-three zero 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 one five zero one. License Solutions Provider of Microsoft Software and Services. And number nine is the renew RFP sixteen zero zero thirty-two P C M insurance program. Life and long-term disability. Any items that you'd like to pull for discussion?
Got a question on one. Number seven.
Number seven. Any anybody else?
Mark, uh for this demolition and abatement services, is this pertaining to the Bayou Street or Jasmine Street or Jasmine Ave?
Both.
Both of them? Okay.
And any future, you know, I think it allows us for for future ones we may have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kipta? Yes. Commissioner Seber? Yes. Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, we're now going to the special consent agenda, which is item number ten, red or five renew or bid number eighteen zero 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 six B R S Utility Rehabilitation and Construction Services Staff Report.
Paul Smith will give that. And again, this is one that's on the special consent because of the amount of money.
Thank you, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. This is what I was referring to earlier. We're asking to renew a contract with um two contractors that allows us to quickly uh mobilize and do both water sewer and reclaim water work, generally on small to mid-sized projects. We're asking for that same amount again this year, four hundred thousand. And um purchase orders will only be issued against um projects that we actually have approved, so. We're asking for your approval on that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh if you would, share with us some of the experience that you have with the one on Florida Avenue.
Yes, I put in the memo here and I see it's carried through on the procurement memo. Uh we've gotten a lot of work done through this contract. We like how it's structured, where we have two different contractors to choose from. That has several advantages. But we found that um these two were picked from a group of five originally competitively bid, and these were the lowest cost uh of the two, and they performed very well. One of the contractors actually did that repair for us on mirrors and Florida, that very large twenty-inch water line break, and we were impressed. I mean, within hours of our phone call, they were on site with equipment and getting parts ready to go. And as you can imagine, to to have the ability to have that all set up in advance, it just helps you control costs. It was a very reasonable cost to to finish that repair. And it allows us to be responsive when we need to be.
Thank you. Any commission comment? Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. Um I see the funding is to be identified as project arises. Where would these be coming from? Storm stormwater or?
No, they're actually in our budgets for underwater distribution sewage collection. You'll see in those capital projects, there's actually line items identified with dollar amounts for this type of work.
Depending where they fall, it would be it's still it's still gonna be under that water umbrella, though.
Yes, water or sewer, but you know, each each department, division has a budget accounted for it.
Thanks.
Any other commission comment? Any public comments on this item? I need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kipta? Yes. Commissioner Seber? Yes. Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor Alhuzis.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the uh item number eleven is the award bed number nineteen zero zero forty-five. B J J Marina dredging and floating dock installation. Staff report, Mr. Licorice.
Yes, again, we've been dealing with this in several budgets. Started out several years ago. With two hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget, we found quickly that that wasn't gonna be enough. We've also added the fireboat, and the fireboat lift has been important. We've looked at the deterioration of other ends of the docks. And unfortunately, I mean, we we increased our budget and we budgeted out of our penny fund five hundred thousand dollars to do it this year, which we need to do pretty much immediately because of the problem. Obviously, we were hoping the bids would come in around that area. They didn't. Six hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight it came in. But I think, Tom, if you want to come up and talk to him about the different severity of what we found of what's going on there. We looked if there was any area, if there's really no area we can cut out of this, it's all safety, and if we want to run a marina, um we gotta do it right. Obviously, we're not gonna cut the fireboat and the fireboat lift out. So there is nothing, although we looked at the different pieces, I see nothing that we can cut out of this project to do. So we just have to to bite the bullet and we'll be a, you know, a hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-eight over from our penny fund, but it's we've waited um to the point where we can't wait anymore and and we got bids from from good places and uh we I think we had five, four good bids. And uh this is the lowest bid, so you might tell them a little bit about the extensive damage that's gonna have to be repaired.
Yeah, it's it's one of those things where, you know, pay me now or pay me later. There's no doubt about that. Uh yeah, we replaced piers. We've worked on piers the last few years, but it just as it continues to deteriorate, it gets faster and faster. Uh there's other things over there, including the floating docks are a better system. We also have dredging in there, which is which is a critical part. It's never been dredged before. We have a couple of slips that right now are not usable, and even some of them become shaky in 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 a low tide. The money's there. It was a little more than what we originally uh estimated in the beginning. Uh there is quite a bit of contingency left in this because, of course, you're below surface, so sometimes you just don't know what's down there. Uh I don't believe we'll have to tap into consensus contingency, so it should lower these costs. I can't guarantee that. I hope it does. Uh but no, it's a project that's been been long overdue, long overdue.
Thank you. I was just wondering, do we have any uh routine maintenance program that you do preventing maintenance on?
Yeah, we do, and uh it replace we re- repair piers as we go go along. There's a sleeve system we can put on them.
Yeah.
Uh but you know, uh the water there is very, uh the conditions are very unpredictable, so you may see a pier that looks fine one day, and then six months later, uh sometimes they rot out from the center, so you can't tell. Uh so we're constantly checking and repairing them, but you know, we we could continue that, but you're just throwing good money after bad money. You know, it doesn't it doesn't make any sense to continue this way.
Yes, thank you, Tom. Yes, definitely. This has been something we've been talking about for years and waiting to happen.
Yes.
So I'm glad we're finally there. Uh it's definitely necessary. Well, repairing these slips and doing the dredging uh allow us to have some more transient slips down there?
Uh it could, yeah. We can reconfigure it in what we want. Uh but yeah, we'd get more transit tringents as where the where the the fees are the best.
That's the number one complaint I get about from boaters about people coming or visitors coming to spend a day in Tarpon Springs and have nowhere to dock. So I think it'd help with increasing some revenue from the marina and and uh also making some of our visitors happy that want to come by boat.
Yeah, this will be the last step. We rebuilt the the building itself last year, so this will be the next step. Looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. Can you, we don't have a whole lot of backup on this, which I'm not super excited about, but um can you tell me about the projected longevity of the project? So how long you anticipate the floating dock to last? And also um the dredging of the area, how long you anticipate that from? I I know it sounds like we're gonna be dredging the river also, so it I would imagine it'd be a while before silt comes back in, but do you have any of that information?
Uh I beli- I'm not exactly sure the life of the docks. It should be twenty-plus years. That's fairly normal. Uh I'll look at that. I'll get some more details if it falls a little more into what the warranty is on it. But I can see no less than twenty years. I can't predict the 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 silting. It's impossible. You just don't know what the how the uh currents and the effect that stormwater have on that area. So I wish I could give you a little more more comfortable answer, but uh there's no way I can predict silt, uh how fast it's gonna silt back up. It hasn't been touched in probably forty years anyhow, so.
Yeah, I've visited, and it obviously is a, it's in rough shape. I agree. Piggybacking off what Commissioner Seber asked, is there other areas in the sponge docks that we could utilize for uh day visitors to rope off if the marina's full? Like, does the city have other portions of the seawall that can be used other than the city marina?
The only other seawall we have that general area would be where the sponge boat area is.
Okay, that's the only other spot. What's the what's costing more in this situation? Is it the dredge or the dock and the dock removal?
Uh dock, I think it's more the new docks themselves, not so much as the demolition or the dredging. I don't have it booked that right in front of me, but it's it's more, it's a combination of things. The the docks, the new docks themselves cost the most money. Building the docks, setting the piers, and that's the highest the highest cost. The dredging, I don't think it was, if I don't recall off the top of my head, exactly how much it was, but it wasn't uh exorbitant as the the docks themselves.
Can you send me the breakout, please?
Be happy to do that.
Thanks. Uh just another comment, uh like I mentioned earlier, the marina looks great from the outside. There's a lot of great aesthetics. The bathrooms look excellent, which I was like really surprised how nice they were. Uh and then the the landscaping, the potting plants and the the area, and I know that there should be a statue at some point coming to that area, potentially here soon as well. Um to make some more beautification areas is what my understanding is. So um thanks for bringing this forward and it it's a first step and it's a one of the first things that people see when they come into the sponge docks. Uh there's a lot of people this weekend interacting with the staff of the marina and in the chamber uh office, and it was I was shocked to see how many people were going in and out of there. Um so it's a highly utilized area for non-voters that are people just walking up and down the streets, so.
We follow the reviews online quite a bit to see how they're reacting, so a lot of them have been very positive. They'll be really happy now, so.
Great staff down there.
And any way we could leverage um advertising for promoting our captains that are running spaces is always an important aspect, too, so. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. Um I'm I I I I I am also glad that that is finally happening. Mark, was all the swift mud permits resolved? It's been for a long time, but that wasn't being pulled up, correct?
Yes, they finally.
That's all resolved?
Yes.
And the fireboat and the lift, that's like three years old in my request list. It's probably gonna be there?
If you're gonna approve it tonight, uh get done before you leave.
Oh, well, okay, very good. So 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 you'd say by summertime, it'll be there, correct?
They, I think it's a hundred and twenty days. Once we, once you approve and find it, I think it's a hundred and twenty days. Hundred and twenty days? Yeah, I think that's what it was. Yeah, there's gonna be about.
And well, I know, and I seem like it, that is a lifesaving issue because currently I think we're still departing off, we have to go to Pasco depending on the tide. Depart from Anclot or they can depart from Stanmis depending on that tide as well, but I think it's primarily Pasco. So um this boat's gonna be able to access thing things, uh you know, much mu- much more quickly. So um while the 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 uh the uh the the uh recreation aspect is very important, that that is that that is that is important as well. So thank you for your free, your hard, your hard work on that.
Thank you. Um yeah, this this project has been, we've talked about this for many years, and unfortunately, there were really no funds. Uh and I'm happy to finally see this uh taking place. Be um you know, we are waterfront community and um we need to be able to, people come up our river to visit for the day, for a couple hours overnight. So we, you know, people need somewhere to tie up, so um um when it comes to, I know we have we'll have some transient parking. What about if someone wants to come up for a couple hours um for lunch, and there's 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 nowhere on the sponge docks on the river to tie up?
That that is available.
So I I know we've talked about it before, and so we have a few slips available. You could tie up for the day or a couple hours as.
Yeah, we have some options of moving the other boaters that some of the boats that come in and out all the time. Part of the contract allows us to use it for for uh transits if required for a few hours, so. Yes, we do actually have some people come up, spend two or three hours and that's it.
I I know, because you know, when we're coming off the the island or the water for the day, and you want to, we used to take a ride up to sponge docks, and sometimes you want to stop and just grab a quick bite, and there's just nowhere to tie up. So um I will, how long, I mean, how long, when will we get started on it, I guess, once we approve this tonight?
Uh we'll sit down, have to with the contractor and and work the final schedule out, but sooner the better.
Right, I I know. It's it's a long time coming. Like I said, this is a waterfront community, and this is this is a really important project.
You will see some of the work that when it starts, there's pre-construction work. They build these docks off-site, so even though they're actually producing these, you won't see it down, you won't see the the marina shut down till towards the end. Then they'll come in and do all the demolition and move all pretty quickly at that point.
How long do you think we have to shut the marina down for?
Uh we're hoping to keep it minimalized at maybe forty-five, sixty days. I think that's on the high end, but I'd rather be safe than sorry in this case.
And so can we plan it around, um you know, not summertime plan it?
Usually.
Look at when you use, you know, when when people are using it.
Yeah, usually we uh well, when the the boating kind of slows down a little bit, but believe it or not, right after April for a short time, and it starts getting busy again in it around June, July. So that May, June uh is the time to do it. We're hoping to get to that point where they do shut it down.
Yeah, we're gonna get a sign, see them delivered as fast as we can, so it's a hundred and twenty days start, so we can get done before it gets busier.
And just and I know how important it is for our fire boat to be out there. It needs to be, you know, there needs to be a lift, and it needs to be accessible very easily because they they're going to Anclot Park, and that's just a horrible place, first of all, to launch a boat, and second of all, it's it's so much further. But is there anything closer? Do we ever look at anything closer on the river? Because that's way up the river. So is there anything closer? Because that's way up the river, so is there anything closer, that's closer to the mouth of the river? Um, or in between, did we ever look at any, any other options?
Yeah, they did a, the fire department did a whole study on that, the different options, and brought that before this, I don't remember the date, 'cause it was a while ago, but three years ago.
Probably the year I wasn't in.
Yeah, they looked at all the options, different options, and that was the one chosen as the, as the best option.
So they're, okay, that's, that's why I didn't make sure.
Yeah, one of the advantages of using the marina is the fact that we have personnel there seven days a week. So if someone has to get there, you already have personnel there on board that can help, make sure there's no one in the way, even some cases even prepare the, the site for them to take off, so it may work better in a, in a, in a response time.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Tom, thank you. Commissioner Seber, have another question.
Uh, you know, now that you mention that, Sue, that was one of the questions I brought up when we decided on, on the marina for the boat lift, because I did hear from some of the firefighters that maybe Bell Harbor or somewhere closer to the mouth, uh, would be better, but I don't, I didn't know how that process went as far as deciding on, on the marina. Uh, now, these business owners that are at the marina, that operate out of the marina, will they have to be displaced during that amount of time?
Yes, and we're working on that too, on how we're gonna, where we're gonna boat them to.
Okay. I had another question, but I'm under the weather tonight, so I can't get to quite what. Oh, I know what it was. Now, we have, we own to the end of Hope Street, so there's a seawall there.
Yes.
And the other question I had, which I've brought up to Mark before, is don't we also own at the end of Roosevelt?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Where there's a seawall?
I don't believe so.
I would just like to look into that, because everybody uses that, that portion right there, and I thought the city owned, uh, the end of Roosevelt on the water there.
I can't answer that, to be honest with you, I'd have to take a look at that.
Maybe we can look into it, because there could be other opportunities.
Ray, I looked into it a few years ago, and I was shown a map, and we do own that, and I, 'cause I asked about.
But I've, I've been told to.
Yeah, and I had asked about, um, being able to tie up there, but isn't there a big boat, there's a big fishing boat there?
All kinds of people use that, you know, I don't know if they're using it on our property and tying up to our property, I'm not sure that's ever looked at. Uh, but there are people who come in and, and dock there, but that could be another opportunity for daytime, people to come in at the end of Hope and at the end of Roosevelt. If we could think about in the future putting some, some docks out there.
Oh, we'll look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Pier to Lax five one four Ashland Avenue. Yes, this is a good project, and you've brought up a couple of items related to this with regard to having available extra transient docking, and also a place possibly to, uh, have these charters and things of that nature that are currently there, uh, as businesses to have a place for them. And here again, this is where sometimes you're looking at small things and not looking at a bigger picture. And here's the bigger picture. We've been up here before you talking about the Walmart property and potentials. You could put in a boat ramp right there on the northwest part of that property, right next to the bridge where the water is deep. You could put in some docks. And then here's where it really becomes creative. For those who want to park there and stay in Tarpen, you have a shuttle or a trolley extension that brings them to town, or brings them to the docks. And all these other things that we've talked to you about, that this property has potential for your economic incentiv-ing abilities. Eco-tourism is a moneymaker. And we've talked to you before about options you have on that property. There's plenty of high land up on the wet, the east side of that, that we could put in horse trails and set up an equestrian, because now there's a number of places that do equestrian therapy and options. We've talked to you about putting in a structured such, um, what we call a, um, a disability park, training park, where you have stations and you can use that area. We've talked to you about other options where you could have limited, let's say, commercial abilities, either charters, you, what if you had a gondola service that ran up and down the river and brought people ferrying them back and forth? There are all kinds of creative options. And I ask you to keep opening your mind to some other options, and to continue to look at applying for a Florida Communities Trust Grant for this property. It's not that we don't need parks, because we have a lot of parks, that's not the case. It's how we use them and how we maximize them. So, you have some options here to advance some of your other objectives by proceeding forward with a Florida Communities Trust Grant to purchase that property. And for those who don't know what I'm talking about, if you look, Clearwater has done it, Dunedin bought the Weaver Park on Alternate Nineteen, where they have the pier. And what it is, we only put in twenty-five percent, the state gives us seventy-five percent. So if that property was six million, we'd only have to put a million and a half. And I'm sure we could leverage it through various aspects of our pennies and other things to accomplish that, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? I need a motion?
Motion, please.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kita?
Yes, Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes.
Tom, you might as well stay up there about the seawall, know why you sat down?
Okay, um, uh, it's Resolution twenty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty, uh, sorry, twenty nineteen dash zero two. Um, uh, it, it, it's, it, it's a, it's a reorg of, of the building department.
We're in the Craig Park seawall.
Oh, we're doing number twelve.
We're in number twelve. Jenna, item twelve.
Craig Park seawall, I'm getting hungry, I'm sorry.
I got enough stuff to do, I don't want to reorg. Go ahead, Tom. Yeah. Uh, good evening, uh, Tom Funtz, Public Works Director. Yeah, this is, uh, we've, we've been working on this for a while, this is the next, uh, phase of, of seawall repair. Uh, we started probably back in two thousand eight, uh, and started, uh, right at, uh, the stairwell, the other stairwell over by the Craig Park Recreation Building, and slowly worked our way around. Uh, this last, this next piece over here unfortunately, uh, had a failure uh, right alongside of the VFW section, uh, VFW Memorial, uh, that was actually repaired, that was done back in nineteen ninety with some grout. This number of sections along the wall that would be repaired, that section there that's collapsed, and a number of, uh, of the cap, uh, coming around the north side of the wall, all the way around to the west side of the, side of the, uh, seawall. It's the same project we've been doing for a number of years, uh, there's not much, uh, paneling being repaired, but, uh, it's definitely in dire need. Open to any questions, uh, regarding to the wall?
Yes, uh, obviously, this is necessary, and it's also become a safety issue. Uh, I noticed here that you're talking about rehabilitation all the way to expanding to South Spring.
Yeah.
I think that, as I mentioned to Bob, um, that we need to look at South Spring and have the Corps of Engineers come out before we do any work on those seawalls, because I, you know, we really need to know what, what's going on there. And I wouldn't want us to waste the money repairing those seawalls if they come in and say we need, you know, a certain amount of work there. So that was my, that's my only suggestion.
What seawalls are you talking about?
South Spring seawall.
Like, this is, uh, this is the area right here, it's not gonna go down to South Spring.
Okay, I just saw it, it's extending to South Spring.
It extends all the way to, the, the seawall actually begins over at, where Reed comes on, on the north side of, uh, uh, North Spring, and wraps around all the way over to the, uh, boat ramp.
Only up to the boat ramp?
All right. I just saw South Spring, and I thought it was there. Thanks.
No problem.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, uh, this is an area I grew up in as a child, and uh, I slammed into Bayou a lot and ran around these areas, exercised a lot in these areas. Um, and I've noticed that this is something that's been happening, and I think you mentioned since the nineties of some sort.
Yes.
I guess when we do the same thing over and over again, the same result happens, I have to question, why do we do the same thing over and over again? So is there a different type of seawall that we could put in, if it's like the, I don't know how to say it. I see the seawalls that are, um, they're not just a straight seawall, I don't know if it's metal or fiberglass or some type of different material.
Vinyl.
And where it's, it's like a foot out, and then it goes two feet, and a foot in, two feet, you know what I'm talking about? Kind of like teeth almost. Uh, did we look at any other alternatives to these repairs, uh, in the seawalls, or are we just doing the traditional repairs, because this is what we've done always?
No, the seawall actually repair started back since I've been here, probably two thousand four, two thousand five. I would say probably at this point here, over, over, close to half of the panels have been replaced. With a little bit different, uh, uh, process, they actually, now they're pinning them. A lot of seawalls originally sat on top of, uh, limestone.
Okay.
Uh, so over time, they would start sliding a little bit, and that's what we're having in the one area now. Uh, but the design calls for actually the pinning of the concrete slabs into the stone, so we don't get that slide anymore.
That prevents the drag then, okay. That's good news. This is an area here that's prone to, um, high tides?
Yes.
Um, have you looked at increasing the height of the sidewalk at all?
Yeah.
In this area?
Again, this goes back to early two thousand, when, uh, we first talked and, uh, with the engineer. Uh, in order to do it this way, there was actually original proposal, I think, was to raise the whole seawall around back then, but the, but the costs were astronomical. Even with a vinyl, we actually did a, a bit on it, if I recall, that was both concrete and vinyl, and it come in almost at the, uh, the same cost. Uh, so they decided to go with the concrete. But, yeah, we talked about probably raising it, but, but the other problems, if you raise it, there's other things that, that affected, well, how much you get into the park. It, it was, it was, you had to raise the whole thing level, almost all the way around, and the costs were pretty high.
So would we do it in sections, like, let's say, for instance, in, in this section, if you add a foot and a half, or you take it up to the cap or the curb?
Yeah.
You'd have to have some type of ramp, I guess, in the little round things, and then if you look at it from like a sectional standpoint, and you're laying another foot or so of concrete on top of the concrete today, is that something that's viable, or is that something that's not?
You could down the road add another foot or two on top of the existing wall, that would, that would the way I recommend going, but of course we'd have to have it engineered, but that would be a possible way of doing it.
Okay.
But you're gonna have to do it in pieces, and you're gonna have to slope it, and then you're gonna have to probably meet ADA and
Yeah.
other things, so, yeah.
Understand, okay. I just figured if we're looking at this right now, and, uh, might as well look at some other options, uh, some other discussions, I think, along the sidewalk, questions later about looking at other options as well, if we're looking at doing construction and reporing concrete, wanna look at other options as well, so.
I, I agree.
Okay, thanks.
Any other commission comment? Mr. Funtz, and when do we plan to do this work?
Uh, hopefully shortly after you approve it, uh, I, I believe, uh, we'll, we'll hope to get it done before the art festival, I don't know if that can happen. We have to sit down with the contractor and look at his, uh, his schedule.
That was my question, would not affect the art festival.
Yeah.
Uh, also to make sure that, uh, we're not be done doing the tourism, because a lot of tourists, a lot of visitors using the Bayou.
Yeah, the, the work they're gonna do there shouldn't affect too much of the area, it'll definitely be there, but, uh.
So you're going to do section at a time?
Well, no, they'll do all at one time, you don't want multiple sections, because, uh, multiple, uh, starts, 'cause then it's gonna cost you that much more mobility, so, uh, mobilization, so we're gonna do it one time, get in there and get out of there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Here none? I will entertain a motion?
Motion, please.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kita?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes, thank you, we are now going to, uh, item number thirteen, which is the ordinance two thousand nineteen zero one, the application eighteen dash one twenty-two, shopping cart, this is the first reading. Mr. Attorne, you will read the ordinance.
This is ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero one, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, meaning chapter eight, health and sanitation by adopting article five, shopping carts on public property, providing for retrieval plan, identification of shopping cart signage, removal, and storage of shopping carts, and penalties and remedies, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for modification that may arise at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. There'll be a second reading of this ordinance, it'll be held on February twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, and this was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Staff, report.
Um, before we go any further, it's actually the twelfth that the second reading will be on, not the twenty-second.
Okay.
It's gonna run in the paper on the twenty-second, and then, and on the twenty-fifth. With that, Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director and staff for this particular application. Um, this actually issue has arisen, um, as a result of, um, folks coming in, having conversations with you guys about ongoing issues of having the carts just appear in neighborhoods and sit there. I know our Public Works Department does their best to go around and actively, when they find them in the right of way, remove them and get them to where they belong, which is the stores. But we have, do not have currently on, um, in our, um, code of ordinances, anything that requires the actual owners of the carts to manage the carts. It's under the Florida statute, it is legal to remove the carts from the property of the owner without their written permission. That doesn't mean it doesn't happen. Um, so as a result, this is an attempt by the staff, um, with working with the police department and with the Public Works Department to come up with a process that makes sense, at least from, um, a, a process perspective on how we manage, um, issues here that are like this, and figure out what's the best way to work through the, this issue, um, at least in the public right of way. So this would be public property and public right of way that we're addressing this issue. If folks find carts on their private property, that's something that they're gonna have to work out with the owners. So there's a couple of different, um, components that we're looking to actually establish. The first is basically we would like the cart owners to essentially identify, most of them are already identified, but identify their carts with a contact information, so that we know who we're gonna contact when these carts are found. We want them to develop a retrieval plan, so they are actively going out and retrieving their carts. We want those retrieval plans to come in, and through code enforcement, we'll actually have them approved, um, that process, so if there is any type of violation, it'll actually end up through the code enforcement to, um, deal with any kind of enforcement actions. Um, with that, the other thing that we're asking for is for them to post on their properties that this, basically the statutory requirement, that you can't remove a cart without their written permission. It's a statutory requirement in Florida statute. We've also developed a penalties and remedy section, which again leads us back to the, um, to the code enforcement process, so that was, that's what you'll see here, so basically if there's a violation of this ordinance, should it pass, essentially, they would go through the code enforcement process, so they would be noticed, and they would go through, you know, the various stages of that process. The other thing that is established here is, um, the Public Works Department will actually be, if they find them in the right of way, taking them to the yardways facility, maintaining them there, and then notifying code enforcement, and that's how the process will work, should we find stray carts. So there's a couple of different moving parts here, I can go over that, them in a little bit more detail if you've got questions, but that's the brief overview of where we are and what we've, um, come up with, kind of as a, collectively as a group here at City Hall, um, to try to manage this issue. And I can answer any questions that you have.
I wanna thank you, and I'll thank everybody else involved in these, for these, uh, ordinance, I think it's something that we need. We have shopping carts all over the place, they'll be left in the, uh, public places as well as private property. I mean, they're all over the place, so we need to do something with that, and I know Mr. Licuas has staff looking around. and taking those carts to, uh, and picking them up and giving them to the, uh, the store owner. Uh, my, uh, question is, what kind of a cooperation do we get from the store owners in, for this process?
Well, we've notified them and actually I was kinda a little disappointed. We got, um, like no participation. Um, we have notified all of them that we're looking at this process through the police department so that they kinda had built that com- that already that contact with the, with the folks since they're gonna be responsible within ninety days to, once you pa- if you pass this ordinance to produce a plan. As a result of that, we've not received any phone calls. I know the police department's been actively, because I've asked them on a regular basis, are you getting phone calls? They're not getting anything. I actually added an additional ad in the newspaper so that we would try to generate any additional, um, conversation. But we have not actually gotten anything from the actual, um, owners of any of the carts. So that's a little bit disappointing because again, if they're not participating in that process, they don't get to be part of the discussion. They're just basically gonna get a surprise.
How do we notify them? I mean, you were sending a letter or?
We sent them, we sent them a letter, code enforcement through the, through the police department. They were great helping me, um, get the word out. So we, we sent more than one, um, letter to folks.
Went in person and notified everyone via correspondence. Absolutely.
I mean, code enforcement should be used as the last resort. I'd rather have their cooperation and solve this problem that we have.
Which is what we're trying to do here with doing a retrieval plan instead of making it a punitive action that you just end up in code enforcement. We're, we're, we're gonna be actively trying to reach out to them and make them understand what we're look- what we're trying to accomplish is really compliance here. We just don't want carts in the, in the right of ways anymore.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. Heather, thank you for bringing this forward and, and working on this ordinance for us. Yeah, the, the, the carts have been a nuisance in the community. I just wanna make sure this, this doesn't all fall on code enforcement because I know they're busy enough, um, you know, than have to handle shopping carts. I think it, you know, it's a lot for them. But hopefully, um, the business owners adhere to it and, and understand. And I'm sure they're familiar with, with an ordinance like this in other cities that they're, that they're in, so I, it's nothing new to them, so.
This ordinance represents our research and there are hundreds of examples all across the state of Florida in different cities and different counties. So it's not, this is not gonna be a shocker to the bigger, the bigger vendors that we do have here and the bigger owners that we have here. Some of the smaller owners, it's gonna be a little bit of an adjustment, but we've tried to adjust depending on the su- number of carts that you have, your responsibilities. So we're trying to manage that issue and certainly the code enforcement and myself would be glad to help code enforcement work through those management plans with the individuals if they, if they need some accommodations. We're, we're willing to look at that because again, this is the first opportunity where we're bringing this issue forward to address it.
And so then this, the second reading will be on the twelfth, you said?
Yeah, on the twelfth.
February twelfth.
Correct.
And then it goes in to effect?
Then it goes into effect, but there's a grace period essentially where we'll be notifying them once again. We'll be going out trying to make those contacts again to let them know and they have a grace period about, of ninety days before the ordinance takes effect.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mostly to get their plans in order, right? Because some of these guys will just end up hiring folks who do this kind of work. They just go around and pick them up and drop them off and that'll be their management plan.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes. Oh, yes, thank you. And I always point out, this was brought to us by a citizen. They came up and spoke about it. I know it was on our radar, but that's a positive stat, I think. You know, I, I, they'll actually pull the trigger. I, I don't think she's here tonight, but it'd be great if we, I'm sure we have her address and public comments. Let her know that what she asked for actually came about. I mean, that, you know, it does matter if you come here and get to speak and we listen to you.
I think social media did that, but we-
It did. It's, it, though, though, I mean, it's a big deal. Folks say we don't listen, we listen.
She brought the cart, right?
She did. She brought a shopping cart. I almost laughed. I did laugh because it's funny. But this is, this is actually, like, when I, when I, when I, when I go to the gym, all behind, you know, Walmart and that shopping closet, they're, 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 they're just all stacked in the gutter there. So, uh, that, this'll be a useful plan and, and, and the one, the one, the one, like you said, I'm sure they're, 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 they're used to this and, and the one other cities. This, that, this won't come, um, as a, as a, as a surprise at all, so like.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes. Yeah, I think this is a great ordinance and I know it's being used in other places. Uh, not only are we probably gonna make this lady happy that came to speak to us, but, uh, I've heard several complaints from citizens who are annoyed with, uh, all the shopping carts. Um, and I know we're trying to ease into this with these stores, but they can put stops or whatever those are called on their carts where they won't go beyond a certain point. Uh, I've experienced that in St. Pete or the poles that won't go out the store, whatever. So if they wanted to spend the money to do that, they could or hire someone. Like you said, I think that might be even cheaper for them to hire someone to collect their carts.
And again, all of those are options for them to talk, talk, to put in their retrieval plans that we're not gonna do a retrieval plan because we're gonna do this and that's something that code enforcement will look at and say, yeah, that's, that's a, that's a doable, that's a definitely a doable, um, project. Because we, you know, um, Publix already has the locking carts. The problem is over time they break, right? And so as a result, with the, with them getting broken, then they don't work, so then they can be taken wherever they want. So it's just, it's just asking the owners to just be a little bit more vigilant with what's happening with their carts.
Well, I hope that you do get response from the owners or managers or whoever you've contacted because it's an issue and they need to be, to realize they, they need to be responsive.
Agreed.
Uh, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so most of these, uh, businesses are gonna be big box stores that are chains, large corporations. Uh, I feel we are not being strong enough in this ordinance right now. I think we should probably add some more penalties, um, and some other aspects. I don't mind making a few suggestions, um, since this is the first reading. Um, again, it's similar to Publix and Walgreens. They both have, I don't know the correct verbiage, but it, it's some type of geo fence around their parking lots and your cart, once you hit the fence, will no longer push any longer. So I think that might be something good that we actually recommend because I know today, um, there's a guy that goes around in a box truck. I'm not sure how much he get paid, if it's thirty-five bucks a cart or whatever it may be, and picks up the carts for all the different organizations and then drops them off back at the, um, back at the stores. We're still gonna have that situation unless we put something that's a stronger penalty in place that says, if the city picks up your cart, you're gonna get charged X amount of dollars when it's stored in the Publix work, in the Public Works, um, yard or wherever it's at. And then, um, we may wanna make it a requirement too that they have a certain amount of time, if it's a year or whatever it is, to have some type of geo fencing for their carts for protection also, so they don't, can't leave their property. Because the concern I have is this is, it's a pretty ordinance and it's a, it's a needed ordinance and thank you for working on this and putting it, bring it forward. But unless they're getting their hands slapped hard enough, they're just gonna say, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll work on this and we'll keep picking these up. And it's not like this is, um, a, a Greek restaurant down on the sponge docks or a, a small mom and pop shop in downtown Tarpon Springs. These are large corporations, um, that are here on our highway businesses areas that have the money and have the, the bandwidth to do these types of infrastructure improvements. So I would like to make that recommendation. I don't know if I could lean to our city attorney if this is overstretching or overstepping in some areas, but, um,
There's already a provision in the current ordinance that specifically provides some paragraphs, C one through four on the second page that talks about the fact that these are the types of methods that can be used to, um, put in place in lieu of a required retrieval plan, including the wheel locking system, um, a monetary deposit like Aldi, shopping carts with protruding devices, arms to make sure they don't go outside. Ballards is another physical barrier. Those are listed in the, on, on those paragraphs there. As for the penalty, you currently have in your code a provision, section one dash eight, that limits your ability to find more than five hundred dollars, uh, per violation. Um, the good thing about this particular, um, um, provision in your, in the code, if you adopt it is, is that it specifically treats every day as a s- separate violation. So thirty days of violation, thirty times five hundred can be the possible fine, um, if you did it under the citation process. Unfortunately, the code enforcement department is regulated by chapter one sixty-two of the Florida statute. It limits a fine of two hundred fifty dollars a day. If it's a repeat violation, it's five hundred dollars a day. So there are some provisions that limit what we can actually do in fining. As for a pickup fee, you can absolutely, um, add a provision in your code that says if we have to pick it up, this is what the charge is gonna be. Uh, that is not currently here.
But that will have to be approved by Department of Commu- Consumer Services, I believe, under the ordinance. So before we can put that provision out, we will have to actually delay second reading because I will have to send that up if we're gonna do that. Just FYI for that. Statutorily, there's some limitations in the, in the way the, the statute's written. So I think we would need to send that up just to get their verification. That's why the code enforcement system is the better way to deal with that because we don't have to get approval because we're not setting a specific fee associated with the collection of carts. It's really just a compliance issue because they're not meeting an ordinance, whether it's this one or any other ordinance.
Yeah, can I help, can I just get a little more clarification on this? And so if we pick up a cart from Publix, let's use Winn-Dixie. Um, let's use a, uh, Winn-Dixie shopping cart is picked up, we put it in the, um, the yard over at Public Works, do we then notify Winn-Dixie and then every day that it's sitting there, that's considered a violation?
Correct.
My understanding that, and that's a potential fine every day. So there's technically, it's a retrieval fee then at that point. It's just not labeled a retrieval fee.
Correct. Now you can, you can, like, like, uh, like, uh, Tom is saying, you can do that. You can actually do that. I just have to make an extra step where we, we send this up to the state just for them to evaluate that process because it's outside code enforcement. It's in a very, it's a more specific retrieval fee associated with the cart itself.
Chief, what's realistic here? I mean, is this, uh, is this something that code enforcement, I guess, could this be a nuisance for code enforcement or that two fifty fee seems like it would be pretty sufficient for like collecting fee?
Well, I think this ordinance is a really good start. We can enforce it. We can handle it. We can handle all the logistics of it. And I think you gotta remember one thing. Even though these are big corporations, they're still the victim of a crime. People are taking the carts off their lots. Most of them are poor people who have no means of transportation to take their carts home. So I think with that said, this ordinance is strong enough. I think we can enforce it and we can get this boy out of the community. And if it doesn't work, we can come back to you and we can amend the ordinance.
Okay. Um, touching base on C one through four then, so these are all the areas that are being suggested, the suggestions on how to prevent the shopping carts from leaving the area then?
Correct.
Okay. It's up to the business owner still to determine which method they wanna use.
Correct. If a business owner doesn't wanna pay somebody to retrieve their carts, which is what most retrieval plans are gonna be, this is their alternative. You know, you do one of these or a group of these to prevent the carts from leaving to begin with.
I just think we need to, the whole retrieval, because that's currently what they're doing today is going out and retrieving their carts, kind of, right?
Well, I don't really know if that's been happening. I think it did originally, but I think because there's just no real enforcement right now because we don't have any ordinance to enforce. While they become a nuisance and we can pick them up, there hasn't been any active that I'm aware of and, and at least from code enforcement, it's discussions with code enforcement, there's not really been any active.
From the city's?
Me, yeah, from the, from the city's, there's no, we haven't, we haven't enforced the issue. So if we haven't enforced the issue, they kind of have been ignoring it.
Okay. Like I've seen, not too long ago, I've seen actually a box truck go around, pick up different carts that are out there. So I know they-
They may periodically doing it because they're missing carts and-
And they're worth a lot of money too. Uh, they're expensive, so. Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying these questions that I had. I think that these are fair still. I don't really see a need after I understood the penalties, um, about a retrieval fee. I think that's steep enough to get their attention.
Thank you. Any other commission comment? Are there any public comments on this item?
Here to lax five one four Ashland Avenue. Now, um, let's actually take a look at some of what's in here. Uh, as was referenced on page two C, I just would like to, uh, clarify something that, uh, Heather just mentioned about this where she said you could do one or more of these. If you actually look at the words there, it says at least two. At least two. So if you're wanting to accept the wheel locking system, then you're gonna need to take out the at least two. Secondly, in the, uh, page three, under eighty-eight da- or eight dash one oh one, public works department shall remove and place the stored shopping carts found on public property. Uh, that next paragraph does say, notwithstanding any provisions or subsection, the contrary, no retrieval, storage or similar fee may be charged to the shopping cart owner except to the extent permitted by Florida law. Uh, maybe you need some background as to what the extents of Florida law provide, but I did look up, uh, on the next section, which Mr. Trask referred to, violations of this article may be punished as provided in section one dash eight. In our code, section one dash eight says, if no fine is defined, we have to go by the uniform municipal code citation. I don't know if there is on the uni- verse, uh, huh, uniform municipal code citation form for the county, if there is one for shopping carts. That may be something we need to find out before second reading. Thirdly, nowhere in this ordinance does it refer anything going to code enforcement. Uh, I would like to see that if it's Public Works picking it up, maybe there is a process to be built into place such that, uh, Public Works notifies them, gives them a certain leeway or a certain amount of time before it does get referred to code enforcement, if that's your objective and how you're wanting to do this. Uh, also, in the, uh, effective date says ordinance shall be effective as provided by Florida law, but I heard, uh, Heather saying that it would be ninety days. Uh, if that's the case, then that needs to be fined in the effective date, that this will be going into effect ninety days after approval. Also, posting of signs where it talks about the sign minimums being one and a half by three feet. Uh, maybe in a Walmart, that might be appropriate, but you may want to see if that's necessary and maybe some of the smaller establishments that may, uh, provide or be required to provide this notice. Uh, I would say at this point, uh, yes, we do have an issue with shopping carts, but one of the things that was first mentioned is this is only public property. It doesn't involve private property. So will Public Works go on to public property if they see a shopping cart in the middle of a vacant lot? And that will be considered? I mean, what are gonna be the guidelines for retrieval? Will they have a map of the city showing city properties and city easements and where? So I think there's, needs to be a little bit more, uh, research as to how this will be implemented. I understand the overall intent is, is a, is a good intent, but, uh, there are some things in here that I think need to be fleshed out a little bit more. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? Here none? I will detain the motion.
Motion to approve.
And roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuesis.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number fourteen, reorganization of building department.
Obviously, a lot of you know-
Oh, excuse me, uh, city attorney, would you please read the resolution?
Thank you. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero two, resolution of the board of commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the building development department, including changes to job descriptions and pay grade and providing for an effective date here. Rob, there was a reading of resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero two by title only.
As most of you know, Kevin Powell, since he's been here over six months, I think, or around there, has made a-
Seven months.
A lot of changes and a lot of positive changes in building. Um, this one, he's, during the time he was here, he looked at our organization and he is bringing to you now, and I'll have him present, uh, his change in the organizational structure that he proposes to make it further efficient in his department.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Licor said, I've been here approximately seven months now and done an evaluation on the department and the structure of it, uh, as far as the building inspectors go. Uh, this is more of a title change and a pay grade change than calling it a reorganization of the department. Uh, we're not adding any positions. We're not eliminating in, any positions. Uh, currently I have three building inspectors uh, and one building development supervisor. The building inspectors are rated at a pay grade one and two or a three and four. I wanna go ahead and, and, and change it- I want to go ahead and, and, and change it to each inspector having a, uh, a, a level inspector one and inspector two, inspector three, inspector four, with the pay grade to match that based on licensing. The only way you're going to go from one pay grade to the other is by obtaining licenses from the, the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. Currently, the inspector, uh, one, two is a pay grade sixteen and the inspector three, four is a, a pay grade seventeen. I want to change it to the inspector one being a pay grade sixteen and then inspector two a seventeen, inspector three an eighteen, and then inspector four a nineteen. The inspector four position will be in line with the, uh, plans examiner that we have on staff also. The plans examiner position, uh, would, is a, uh, pay grade nineteen. Uh, in order to achieve inspector four, there again, it's the required licensing and several years of, um, working in the field, uh, as an inspector to be approved for those licenses. Also in this, I want to change the title of the building development supervisor to the deputy building official. Uh, the duty and role of the deputy building official is to, uh, act on my behalf in my absence. Uh, requires a licensing, uh, as a building code administrator, so they can act on my behalf when I'm not in the office. Uh, now we've had, uh, situations in the past where, uh, we may not have had enough licensing. Uh, so I want to eliminate that, create the, uh, not create, but change the title and that's a requirement of the position is for the deputy building official to also have a building code administrator license. When we look at the overall picture as to licensing within the city, uh, we get rated by the ISO, it's an insurance, uh, uh, rating system. And the, uh, more licenses we have, the lower the rating we get, which is another potential for, uh, reducing insurance rates within the city because it's, you know, for, uh, life, health, and safety. The, um, uh, building development supervisor switching over to a, uh, deputy building official, pay grade would not change at all. Currently, I have one individual who is a, uh, uh, as qualified as an inspector four. Uh, my other two are just starting out. They're inspector ones and, uh, I don't foresee them, uh, achieving an inspector four level and for several, several years. I got with finance and looked at where we are, uh, because this does come from general fund. We are currently, uh, twenty-six thousand under budget right now, so it's not going to affect the, um, uh, budget for the department. It's just trying to get everything in line with, uh, the, the positions and the pay grades. Uh, with that, do you have any questions?
Kevin, I want to thank you for, uh, bringing this forward to increase the efficiency of your department. The questions that I have is now currently we have, uh, inspector one, class two.
Yes, sir.
And then we have three and four.
Yes, sir.
By breaking them down to, uh, inspector one, two, three, and four, the inspector of one can still do the inspector two inspection?
No.
How's that work?
It's based on licensing and inspector.
Provide restrictions to you on type of a?
By licensing, yes. The state, uh, restricts what we can do for licensing. An inspector one is going to have a, a, a single license, whether it's a one and two family or a single commercial license. Uh, then they're going to, uh, expand on that. You know, to get to an inspector two level and an inspector three and inspector four. It's all based on licensure.
And, and are you in a position, you have enough manpower that you can do any type of inspection?
Yes. Yeah, we are, uh, fully staffed. I have, uh, my newest inspector has all the licenses. My, uh, future deputy building official has all the licenses and myself. And now we have two, uh, what I would call junior inspectors that are just getting in and, uh, uh, I have one inspector going for testing tomorrow and then one next week going for testing. So depending on which license they're going for is the amount of licensing they, or, or testing they take. For a single family, one and two family dwelling inspector, they've got to take four tests, one in each trade for residential. Or on a commercial single license, it would be only that discipline that they would test in. However, they have, in order for them to move up, they have to, uh, achieve those licenses to move up to the next pay grade. We can't just arbitrarily uh, be in a, a, a pay grade sixteen position and they get all these licenses and have to go into creative, uh, finance to figure how we're going to pay them for their licensure.
The same inspector has the, uh, capability of doing, uh, electrical and mechanical inspection as well?
If they test in that, yes. As long as they have, residentially, yes. They have to take a test for each discipline in order to, to inspect in that, um, that, that, that trade.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Banther? No comment? Commissioner Seaver?
Sure. Uh, so we have two inspector one positions, you said?
I have two current, uh, and people that would be, uh, are classified as an inspector one by licensure.
Okay. Uh, so if, this is just kind of a question that's out there. Uh, if they get, um, if they, uh, meet the requirements through DBPR for three or four licenses and could you potentially have too many people in one, in one position?
No, that's why I want to break it down into inspector one, two, three, and four. I would love to have all inspector fours.
Right.
Just because they can go anywhere and do anything inspecting wise in the city and not have to, uh, schedule around, well, he doesn't have this type of license, so you need to go. So I would love to have all inspector fours. I just don't want the position to be locked down as an inspector one, two, or an inspector three, four.
Yeah.
And then they over license in that, um, uh, that pay grade.
But potentially, uh, inspector two or three could get more licenses.
Absolutely. As long as they qualify with, with, uh, the state, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Kevin, I think you're doing a great job from what I'm hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, in your department. Uh, I think this is a good idea as well for the staff and it gives them opportunity to grow in their pay grades, uh, as long as they're getting further licensure.
Licensing.
And it gives them something to look forward to and something to target, uh, which is important in a career path as well. So uh, I, I support this and I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Thank you. I will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kita?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yeah.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number fifteen, which is the resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero one, reorganization for the project administration department.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Bob Robertson, Project Administration.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's got to do the reading. Yep.
The City Attorney will read the resolution first.
This is resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero three, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the organization of the project administration department, including the reclassification of a position and providing for an effective date here, Rob. That was a reading of resolution twenty nineteen oh three by title only.
Lord is yours now, Rob.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, so I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and as was described, I'm requesting board approval to reorganize my department, just an optimization here. Um, for this reorg, I'm looking to do two things. Uh, first is a title change for my site inspector position. I want to retitle that position to project inspector and focus that position's duties on city projects. Um, and realign the position to report directly to the project supervisor instead of me, instead of the director. And there's an org chart that shows that in the backup. Second is an upgrade to the project supervisor position, which is the number two in my department. Um, upgrade to that pay grade to reflect the upgraded supervisory duties for that position. And it clearly established that the project supervisor will serve as acting director in my absence. That is the basic overview of the proposal. There are details in the backup regarding funding for these changes and I'd be happy to elaborate on those if you'd like me to. So for there, for now, I'll stop for questions there.
I don't have any questions. I just want to congratulate you and everyone in your department.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Any comments?
I've got a quick one. Um, I know you, you had forty thousand, um, annually allocated and this is only going to take ninety-seven hundred. So you've got a leftover of about thirty-six and some change. Do you feel like your department is fully staffed to do what we, the city's asking you to do still?
At this time, I do. Thank you for asking.
Okay. And then those funds are going to go back to the water sewer, stormwater, general funds, I'm assuming?
That fund in particular is water sewer, so that will go back to be available for water sewer to use, yes.
Okay. Great. Um, I just want to make a quick comment. Um, I, I know we've gotten emails and um, it's important. I, there may have been some public comment about communication from the city's perspective out to the residents. And I know Nick has done a great job. Who is, um, your project supervisor, uh, communicating to the residents in the areas of the affected projects. Um, and we've gotten emails saying, thank you for reaching out to us. This has been a breath of fresh air. Um, Nick has really been a great asset that's been added to our city staff. So if you can let him know that we really appreciate.
Thank you.
And it comes down from you as well. Um, so thank you for communicating out to the affected areas of the, the sites that are going to be, uh, or the residents that live in the area of the sites of the affected area. So I think that's really important to continue that. And, uh, as much exposure as we can, that'd be great. No, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You're none? I will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kita?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you. Now we're going to item number sixteen, which is to authorize staff to proceed with the Spring Boulevard sidewalk design.
Yes, and Bob Robertson will be given that, just, uh, just the review. The last thing you asked us to do was get a survey to see what right of way we had there that we brought back to you. So now that we know, um, we're bringing it back for your decision of if you want to proceed with the design and build of the sidewalk project on Spring. So I'll turn it over to Bob Robertson to go over the details.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, again, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. So as Mark said, we're looking for a recommendation on whether to proceed with the design phase of connecting sidewalks on South Spring. Um, currently, South Spring has a gap in the sidewalk of about seven hundred feet on the east side of the roadway, uh, forcing pedestrians to either use the road, the grass, or detours between, um, lemon and lime. This project would use, uh, one of our engineering consultants to design the connector sidewalk. The design would be meticulous and detailed with one-on-one personal input from homeowners and residents along the route. Um, initial survey indicates that we should be able to build the new sidewalk connector entirely in the city right of way. And, um, I've spoken with a couple of residents who expressed some concerns regarding surface features, um, such as trees, curbs, mailboxes, et cetera. Um, we're fortunate to have a, a, a good amount of right of way through this area, and I believe we can avoid most of those features, uh, working closely with homeowners on these items. Um, we'd also relocate irrigation systems if needed, sprinkler systems. Um, residents along the way have been notified about this possible project a couple of times. First back in September when we did the initial survey work and again in December, giving notice of our intention to bring this item for discussion tonight. I believe we have a few folks in the audience, um, that may wish to speak on this project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr, have a question? Comment?
Of course. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is an area of Tarpon Springs that, um, has been long overdue to enhance the safety of, uh, the, the individuals that exercise or walk, bike, walk their dogs, uh, run along this area of, um, South Spring Boulevard. And this is based on discussion with staff and based on workshops, this seems to be the best alternative to fix the, the need right now. Um, that won't prohibit future projects, but this is the best way to look at this. Um, I would like to ask staff also if we're paying an engineer to look at this area. Um, I travel this road often and there's a lot of boats that are pulled down this road as well to the boat ramp. It's rather narrow and it gets even more difficult to navigate when we come around the curves. And there's a couple of curves in this section um, that I would like to ask the staff to look at as well. And it looks like there's a significant amount of right of way um, that's in this area. Uh, I'm not asking to do an extensive road, um, extension, but if we're doing some type of design, I don't know where the funds are or et cetera, but if we're doing the design of the sidewalk, to also look at what, what would it take to maybe extend the road eight inches or twelve inches, uh, because that could do a lot when you've got a large boat pulling or a pontoon boat being pulled by a large truck. And then you're also a vehicle trying to go down this portion of the road. And I would imagine we've all experienced this on South Spring Boulevard. And I would imagine probably the residents have also in this area. And, um, it's a pretty dangerous part of the road. So not just for the pedestrians, but also for the motorists. Um, so if we, I, I'm in support of the sidewalks and obviously keeping the character of the neighborhood the best we can. Uh, proponent for the trees. I know a lot of the trees were removed that were, uh, where all the granite boulders are and we didn't have any replacements in that, in those areas. So any way we could preserve the, the residents' yards, although it's city right of way, uh, the best we can, I, I would encourage. But this is a, a big, um, I'm in big support of this sidewalk coming in, uh, for the safety, um, of this area.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about South Spring and since I live there, I, I notice everything.
Yes.
Um, I feel like with, you know, using the city right of way, uh, it could potentially make the street narrower and, and that's what I'm concerned about. Um, we have boat traffic and, and, you know, trailers and trucks and pedestrians and bicyclists, uh, all in that area. And I think we need more space. And this is why I had recommended the one way. I know that you said that, uh, sixty-six percent of the people did not, uh, want the one way, but, um, I don't feel that extending the sidewalk and the right of way there or taking people's property is, is, is going to fix the problem. Uh, because we'll still have people running on the street, you know, bicycling on the street, um, walking their dogs on the street. So it, it's just, to me, not the solution. I still think that we need to, to look at what's across the street and do something, uh, with that area and, and maybe, uh, again, look at the one way. I, I have never seen the results of that as far as who, you know, I know that it's listed in our backup, but who voted or, you know, who, how, you know, how did those results end up that way? Um, but anyway, that's, that's kind of a concern of mine. Um, so if we could do something to make the street larger, uh, by doing one way or whatever we decide to do, if we look at the, at the situation on, on the west side with those rocks, if, if there's something, that's why I would like to have a study done. Something that potentially can be done on that side, I would prefer to do that.
I understand.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. And, and thank you, Bob, for this. I know this is a very sensitive area. And no matter what we decide to do, it's going to be people happy or, or, you know, or unhappy. And this plan you proposed is, is a decent plan. I am just concerned, as I've heard from some residents, I know we're not using any, 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 any private property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But it definitely, people would perceive
Absolutely.
their front lawn as their own property.
Yes.
Regardless if it is or isn't. Like I know, you know, I live on a street that was developed, the one, the one, the one, the one in the seventies, so I know past my sidewalk, well, I have to maintain that. It's not technically my property. The city can do what they want with it. Um, I guess if you've not had a sidewalk and your property goes to the road, you perceive it as property. Regardless if that's the case or not. Um, have, have you talked with any residents about concerns about the sidewalk coming too close to, to their house?
I have.
And what has the feedback been and what's your solutions for that?
Um, the concern is that, just like you said, sidewalks coming too close to the home, even though it's in the right of way, um, kind of makes you feel like your privacy is being invaded. Uh, maybe noise from people walking and talking. So the solution to that is to put the sidewalk still within our right of way, but as close to the curb as I feasibly can and safely can. So that would be the, the solution. Again, not in the roadway, but, uh, between the curb and the right of way, but as close to the curb as possible.
How close to the curb can you put a, uh, uh, is there a rule or a standard practice?
Yeah, there's a, there's a guideline based on, uh, uh, that sets, uh, the width of the sidewalk. If you have a curb, the sidewalk has to be a certain width. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but we would, uh, we would follow our own guidelines on that.
And I mean, I'm not crazy about, like, you know, one-way street. I don't, if Seaver lives on that street, she wants that, so. I guess I give her some difference towards that, but I don't know if I would support a one-way street there. Um, I just have some concerns about, and, and, and two to the point, I mean, people here, bikers in Tarpon Springs, love not to use the sidewalk. Obviously walkers do, and that's who I'm. Obviously walkers do, and that's who I'm most concerned about, is the elderly walking that walk the bayou. The people walking their dogs. The bikers here love to bike in the street. I'm always terrified of hitting them or somebody else because our roads aren't huge here. People get anxious being slowed down in traffic. They want to pass them, and that's just dangerous. So I definitely don't think it's a biking solution. I think it's more of a walking solution. Like Commissioner Carr said, those that want to exercise by, you know, walking or whatnot, or running. So I'm just not sure about this. I'll wait to hear some more input. But regardless, I thank you for working on this and all your help with this thing.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Bob, thank you for bringing this back to us, because I know we've all been concerned about making this more a walkable community, and especially South Spring, and getting the sidewalks joined. But I went out to the properties yesterday, and I know it's our right-of-way, but again, you know, these owners feel like, you know, that is part of their property. And if we were to extend the sidewalk, I mean, some of these properties will have no front yard left, or very, very minimal front yard left. And then if we, but if we keep the sidewalk close to the curb, then it becomes, to me, a safety issue. That is a very dangerous road as it is. I don't like the buses going up and down that road. They go so fast up and down Springville, and I just, I don't even think that should be a bus route whatsoever, school buses I'm talking about. People with boats and trailers, and it is, it's very dangerous. You go around that curve, around the curves, it's extremely dangerous. People are constantly, the trailers are going up on the curbs and the sidewalks as it is. I just, you know, and like I said, I think I was one that asked for this to be brought forward. But I don't, I don't think this is the best option right now. I would like to see if there's anything possible we could do across the street where those horrible-looking rocks are at. I don't know if we can build a boardwalk over there on top of them. I'm not sure. But is there anything we can explore, some other options at this point? I know it's going to cost more money, I get it, to do a study. But I think there's got to be a better option to what this plan is. And I appreciate the work you've done on this, I really do, but I just don't think it's the best option. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, can I say something else? Oh, sorry. While I'm thinking about it.
Thank you.
I told you I was under the weather, Ken.
Yeah. Well, Bob, I want to thank you for all the work you did. This is a very sensitive area. And pedestrian safety is very important to us. And it's the responsibility for the city to provide sidewalk a way that pedestrians can actually use right now, just walking on the street. My, well, those rocks on the Spring Boulevard are terrible design, won't know that. I don't know how that was expected, I mean, accepted by, I thought, five years ago, but I, it was terrible design, kind of ruined the whole area. Would have been nice people to walk and enjoy the beautiful view of the water. And I agree with Commissioner Kikta that if there's anything that we can do to utilize the water side, that would be the best option, because you're not going to affect any of the houses with the sidewalk. Also, people are going to have a beautiful view and enjoy the water. Is there any way that you can provide us, what's going to cost, what is the, what option that we can have for that? Because this is what I really like to have. I know that we said in a questionnaire hour, you have one-way street, and 66% of this they know. So obviously, the people don't like that. So that doesn't give us too many options to work with.
Since this has been going on a long time, if you remember, and I'll have Bob remind, send that out again. What, we gave you, I think, six or seven options, and the cost related to those options. What we've been doing is going through, we looked at the one-way, just one option. We looked at the other one. Here is the biggest problem, I'll reiterate again, and again. I really, at this point, whatever you direct me to do, I'll do. Because, you know, I'm not getting the arguments that they're not ugly rocks. They're a project and designed to keep that road, and they won't have to worry about the yards, because the road and the yards will probably fall into the water in 15 years or whatever. The biggest problem with the Army Corps of Engineering, we've been dealing with it forever, is they tell you, you can't affect the rocks in the ground. They tell you, you can't do this, you can't do this. But do a design for us, and we'll look at it and review to you. But it's not just sketch something out. You have to do a full design. And I think in those choices of the other choices, for instance, the boardwalk, the other things, do we have the prices in there that'll probably cost us for design on there?
I'm working on those right now.
Process costs? So we'll add that when we get that out to you.
Each option.
Yeah.
Each option.
Yes, it's not $10,000, it's not, it's a tremendous amount to design to them to look at, because they will not look at anything partial. The one thing we have thought about is taking a small portion, maybe, and design that for a cost and see. Because obviously, if they won't let us do the small portion with a boardwalk, they're not going to let us do anything else with it. They just give us so many criterias that you can't, oh, you can give us a plan, you can't penetrate surface, you can't move the rocks, you can't do this. Well, that kind of eliminates a whole lot of stuff. Obviously, if we do a boardwalk, it's got to have rails and everything else. So now you're probably affecting the people across the street's view if they allow it. So if you'd update that and get that back to them, the other option, because these are only two of the options. The options were the one-way, an option was the sidewalk on the other side. And then there was options of different type of things. There was an option, I think, for try to get a four- or five-foot sidewalk and try to put that in over the other side. There's the boardwalk, and, but to look at them and look at the design cost of it, and if that's what it, because again, as I said from the very start, this idea is going to really, I mean, those lawns of those houses have been there a long time, and we're going to tear them up to put the boardwalk that. But that's the, you know, the one-way street was a problem, because we're going to go against a lot of people doing that. We'll update and get that back to you about the options on the other side, but they're going to be very costly and time-consuming. And again, the biggest problem is the Army Corps won't give it. They won't, you know, they won't give us direction. You fully design and pay all the money to do the specs and design, and then we'll tell you. We will tell you some things we don't want to see. We've got an engineer that worked on it and worked on the options that can try, that says he can try to see what he can get through. So again, that's your next choice if you don't want to go to this sidewalk portion of it. The next thing to do is get the design criteria, maybe pick a section that's where there's no sidewalks to do a test project that we try to permit. But the next effort would be for us to look at those and bring those options back to you, to look at what we might want to do and what the cost is going to be to give you the options on the other side of the road. So that would, if that's your direction, to not do it and go towards that, then we'll take that direction for tonight and start on that line.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is why, I know I've heard all this, Mark, but this is why I wanted to hear from the Corps of Engineers, because this project was done five years ago, things have changed. And they obviously have changed by looking at that street. So I really would like to see what the Army Corps says again about that street and what's been done. And I guess the reason I came up with the one-way is because that street was in danger of falling in, as you've said, Mark. And less traffic might help that and maybe increase our property values rather than decrease them if it floods all the time there. So I still would like to see if they have any suggestions or what they think about how the structure is now on that street before we move forward to anything. I'm sure none of us would want a boardwalk in front of, you know, as a view. So I'd really still like to see what you can find out, or if you can have them come out, maybe give us a presentation on what's going on with that, so that we know. Thank you.
Is that possible, would they come out?
I don't think, again, we'll ask again, we've told, we'd ask. Bob, what have they told you?
Yeah, I can ask, and what they'll say is, yes, you can do anything you want to. Send in your application and we'll let you know. That's what they say. And as long as we don't impact the existing project or put any risk to the function of that armoring, that's what they call it, shoreline armoring, revetment, then they can approve a project. But the problem is, we have to demonstrate that with a full set of design plans.
Is it still functioning, though, Bob?
They're always going to say, yeah, you can do anything you want. If it meets our criteria, go ahead and send in an application.
So my question is, is it still functioning? Because I've seen it get worse and worse every year as far as flooding goes.
I don't think the flooding and the shoreline protection are the same issue. I think the revetment, the armoring, is functioning as it's supposed to. I think we're dealing with other issues related to flooding and sea level rise citywide.
Right.
You know, we express our opinions. Let's hear from the people. And I like to take that to the public comments and see if we have any different ideas from the public. Any public comment? Yes, please come forward to the podium. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Teresa Esposito, and we own the house on South Spring, right on the corner where Lemon and South Spring meet. And there are three houses, ours, the next house, and the next house, that are much higher than the other houses. And we're very concerned whether that was taken into account when they were laying out the plan, because I can't see where it wouldn't require retaining walls on these three pieces of property. I don't think that you could just put the sidewalk, you know, up on the hills, on the hills, or on the rise of the property. That was one of the things. But I haven't heard anybody talk about, aside from the boats with the trailers, you have the speeders. And coming, the cars that are coming down and then meeting other cars, and both of them speeding, is pretty scary. And the, if you go up further, it's just as bad, because the street is so narrow. So beyond the lime to lemon area, you go down by the boat ramp and then up South Spring towards Tarpon Avenue, it's just as bad. There's turns there. The road is too narrow to have two cars that can pass each other without it being very, very close by. So that's the big issue for me, and I just feel that I would love to see them come up with a different plan. That's whatever that is.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes.
Hi, I'm Jean Lindsay. I live at 305 South Spring Boulevard. One thing I wanted to ask was, we're in a historical district. Has, if we want to do anything to our property, we have to go in front of the historical board to make sure that it's approved. Have they had any input into the project? In the way it's going to change the dynamics of the area? I think it's something that should be addressed, because we can't change anything in our yards without them okaying it. So I think they need to look at it. The narrowness of the road, I think, is a huge concern. I think I've owned that property, can't remember if it's three or four years. Since I've owned that property, I've seen myself two different cars going to the bayou, being pushed off the road because of speed. One on the other side of the bayou and one right along the main curve on our side of the bayou. I can't remember if there was a third one, but I'm thinking there was possibly a third one. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was bicycles. I brought up the question to Bob when I talked to him. He said that this would eliminate the traffic of bicycles on the road. I thought it was illegal to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. I thought it was mainly for walking and possibly jogging. So we're going to encourage people to break the law to fix a problem. Maybe it's not a major law, but it is a law. I'm doing my duty. It's not a law. That's what I've always heard. Okay. Well, we cleared that up. The other thing is, is my house was built in the 30s. It is very close to the road. That's a huge concern to me. Right now, as it is, when people are walking in the street, I can hear their conversation as clear as day into my house. In order to put a sidewalk in front of my house, unless, I went out and measured it today, unless it goes over 10 feet into my yard, they're going to have to take down two very mature trees out of my yard. And that's another concern that I have. Then, also along the bayou where they actually die for the cross there, that road is so narrow getting two cars down there. You almost have to totally stop for a car to pass you. I don't know when the survey was done that brought up the 66% that okayed or refused us to go one-way. I did get a questionnaire, and I did email back on the questionnaire, some questions I had before I gave an opinion of any kind, and I never got a response. So I never did vote, because I didn't get the information I had requested. I didn't realize maybe I could come to one of these meetings and talk about it here. So I would like to see who all voted. I heard there was 100 and something votes that were taken for that 66% that refused it. I don't know how many people even live on the street to have that many people vote for it. So I would love to see the results of that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Paul Sodarakis. I'm at 317 South Spring Boulevard. We got the thing in the mail showing the layout and how far it's going to cut into the lawns. And I walked the whole path, and it's just, it's going to destroy the whole feeling there and everything. And that street is so narrow. The telephone pole in front of our house was hit. The car went in the water. I mean, it's just one accident after another. It's a bad, narrow street. And if anything, the widening of the street or doing something like that would be a thing to do. It's, I have a boat pull out of the driveway, and it's almost, you know, you're going to get hit, so. That's about it. But it just, it was shocking getting that in the mail and seeing, you know, what the plans were. And I was never asked either about the one-way. You know, I'd be for that, too. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is Lou Esposito. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here. I know all of you are familiar with the situation that we're talking about. I know all of you go by there and know how it is. You know, we're so opposed to it because it's going to change the whole area. Now, it might cost money to do a survey or whatever it takes to look at the other side of the street, but how about making Tarpon Springs more beautiful than it is? Sometimes it costs a little bit of money. And I think it should be looked into before we jump into doing something. You know, there's been a lot of projects. I've been in Tarpon Springs for many years. My daughter went to grammar school in this school, this building right here. I've seen too many projects that started and ended up to be a big problem. So this could end up to be a big problem. It's just too nice of an area to just jump into something. So I think it just is going to take a lot more consideration and looking into before we get into this project. So I would just like to see, and I would like the opportunity for us to know what's happening before anything is done. But so, please give us some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Chu. I'm at 311 South Spring Boulevard. So we are right where the existing sidewalk ends. That's our house. And we have concerns, because actually, y'all mentioned a lot of our concerns. It could be very noisy. Our bedrooms are in the front and the side. So we hear it already. But if people are going to be walking in our front yard, it's going to be worse. And it is a beautiful, beautiful setting, and it's going to change if we put a sidewalk in our front yard. It's just going to change the way it's been. We've been there since 1950. it's going to change if we put a sidewalk in our front yard. It's just, it's just going to change the way it's been. We've been there since nineteen fifty-nine. And sorry. My father planted the tree in our front yard sixty years ago. And it would break our hearts if a sidewalk caused us to lose the tree. It's a very emotional thing for me. It's, I'm very passionate because my father loved trees and he started the tree from an acorn. Okay, forgive me. I'm, I cry. I loved your suggestion about revisiting, um, doing it across the street. I think the granite rocks are ugly. I'm sorry. I just think that they just take away from the beauty that is our bayou. And I think the little, I don't know, twelve to eighteen inch sidewalk or whatever that little path is, is almost dangerous. I tried walking my dog there and, and it's just too narrow. But I don't think the answer is to put it in our front yards. We have a sprinkler system that goes right to the curb. Um, and again, our beautiful tree. So I would like to suggest that you go with the um, recommendation of doing the study again and maybe consider doing everything across the street. When the art show is on, it's going to be a mess, Epiphany, and everyone parks. We've had to move our cars down the end of our driveway so people wouldn't park in our driveway. And it's, it would just be um, it, it just would take away from the beauty that is Tarpon Springs, you know? Bayou is Tarpon Springs and we want to preserve it. So I'm, I'm really thankful um, that you give us the opportunity to share our hearts. Sorry that I'm emotional, but it would just change so much. And I really do ask that you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Any other comments of this item? I hear none. Any other commission comment?
Thanks. Um, this is an interesting situation. Um, Mark, you've had uh, three commissioners and a mayor tonight bring up the direction to look at the boulders further. And there's some areas that potentially we could wiggle some money out of the current budget this year to do some more design work. And I, I agree, that's the most ideal situation is to address the boulders in some way, fashion, form, however may be. If it's, it's a boardwalk, if it's somehow we extend the spring bayou, seawall around Whitcomb Bayou, connect it to the county and somehow make that like a um, big picture plan where we connect it to Sunset Beach going out the golf road. Or if it goes to Mirs and then that goes to Florida Ave, then out the golf road and then the Sunset Beach or something along those lines. But I think you had pretty clear direction tonight with four different commissioners, um, or four different board members about further design across the street. In this situation though, my parents live in a historic district. I grew up in a historic district. They've got a front porch and their sidewalks, I guess about ten feet from their, their front porch. I understand sidewalks are a safety issue for the city of Tarpon Springs. If you were to go build a house, which there's a newer house in this section that has a sidewalk already installed, you're required to put a sidewalk in this, in your house, if you build a new house. Over ninety-plus percent of all houses have sidewalks there and there's no safe way for a pedestrian to walk this area. So I understand that it could, it's going to mess up your yards, but there's city right of way that's here and by code, today, if you were to build that same house, you would have to put a sidewalk in front of it. It's part of a community. I mean, there's, when you're out in your front yard, if you have people walking by on the sidewalks, you talk to them, you say hello. The last thing I want to see is trees taken down and disruptions, but there is a need for safety enhancements and this is one way to address this. The boulders, I've been on the board for about a year and a half, coming on two years in April. I brought up a petition signed by, I don't know, I remember how many there were. I brought it to the commission way before I was even running for commissioner and asked that something be done with these boulders across the street from a lot of your residents that you're looking at. And nothing has been done still in the many years since I brought that up to the board at that time. So yes, the ultimate goal is to do something with the granite boulders across the street. But I do think today we still need to address the glaring safety issue of the pedestrians in this area. And I don't necessarily think it's going to ruin the character of the neighborhood. I think it's going to enhance the character of the neighborhood because you have more of a, a safer area and a more of a community area for people to walk. So thank you for your public comments. This is important for you all to, to reach out to myself via email or cellphone anytime or any of the board members when you have anything that you feel you want to express that's up for public discussion. So Mark, I, I guess I also want to reiterate though that we want to continue to look at.
Again, I have no, again, as I've said before and before, when we gave you, we gave you six or seven options. And those that you're talking about are one of the options. I was first directed to do the one way and I was directed to do this. We're ready and Bob is ready to, to go get you the figures of what it's going to cost to assign the rest of the options, whether it's a sidewalk on the side, whether it's a boardwalk and bring those options back to you with what the cost is that we're going to have to pay to do the design that the Army Corps is going to need because the Army Corps is not going to tell you anything or come make anything until you give them a design book. But if that's your direction tonight, we're ready to go for it. And next time we'll come back, we'll bring you those options.
Can I make another comment? Yeah, potentially, I think we could even look at funding from the county for this, uh, from their penny funds. Could we not? So
Yeah, we could look at a lot of options.
County for any kind of improvement. Yes, state.
I know there are a couple of state representatives that some of you have been waiting to talk to about a project. That would be
I would talk to some of them. So I, I think that's, you know, a good opportunity.
Pedestrian safety is on the forefront of the county as well. Um, and that's one of the conversations I had with a lot of their staff is pedestrian safety and how they can increase pedestrian safety. So again, that should be.
Before we take this item to the vote, I want to thank you all for being here and commenting on this uh, on this item. Uh, it is so important to have pedestrian safety, but also it was a, a project that it was done by the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, of course, the city was involved at the time, five years ago, but to me, it was a terrible design. And of course, we can't go back and redo what it was done, but what, we need to go forward. We need to provide some kind of a, a pedestrian safety, a sidewalk. As you heard from everyone here, we want to revisit the uh, the west side again and look and see what options that we have. And perhaps we'd see what kind of a fund that we can get from the, from the county, make perhaps a state or something and supplement some of the expenses that we're going to uh, to come up with. Mr. Licorice, I'm sure he's going to be uh, happy to come up with all the options that we have. So if there's no uh, any other questions or comments, I like, I will ask for.
Well, you don't really have, if that's the direction you're giving me. I mean, first of all, you got to decide if you're voting on the side. Motion on the thing about the sidewalk.
So I need a motion on that if we're going to accept the uh, the recommend sidewalk design or not.
I'd like to make a motion that we don't uh, recommend the sidewalks.
Second.
Okay. Real confidently. Is that clear where we're voting?
You're voting to deny it.
Deny it.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we deny. Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kickedit? Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Panther?
Yes.
Merrill Huzus?
Yes.
And then I've got, I think it's clear. I got the direction, what to do and what to bring back to you. So.
I thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And now we're going to uh, item number seventeen. Discussion Sustainability Committee. And this item was placed on the agenda by Vice Mayor Panther and Mayor Chris Hala Huzus's staff report.
Here's the, you, you've, you've gotten your backup. What I said, it's really an item that you're putting on the agenda. So there's no staff item on the, on what you put on the agenda.
Yeah, let me talk mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Well, this is no surprise to anybody. Um, I believe it's been, it's been talked about in some form for a while and, and I think late July, uh, Mr. Larson came forward and uh, mentioned several things. And this was one of the items as well to create this, 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 this advisory committee. And uh, myself and that's the mayor requested that, you know, we, we, we uh, give Mark formal approval to move forward with, with, you know, with drafting this board makeup, what it will be, what it will consist of, not who, but you know, the, the different things that they will do and then bring, bring, bring it, bring it, bring it, bring it, bring it back for for a, for a, for a, for a first, first reading. I'm, I'm probably the last person you think would bring this item up, but you know, I do think when you hear and um, you hear enough citizens want something and they want to engage in a formal process to advise the city on, on important matters. You have surrounding communities doing the same thing. I see no harm in allowing us to do that. And then I don't know, I would see benefits coming from that. But definitely the city needs, it needs after approval tonight, if, if this passes, it needs its due diligence time to put together, how do we make this best work for Tarpon Springs? Um, we've, we've, we've had a lot of input material wise from, from various sources. We've had um, we've had draft proposals. We have examples from other cities. It's told by Ms. Larson, the Florida League even has something we can look at. And that the governor e- even created some, this, some new office of, of sustainability or something. So I think Mark has, has lots of resources that he, that he can pull from to, to create this committee. I think it'll be a good thing, uh, you know, the, the moving forward. I think some of the sticking point is from what I've heard from some emails is the timing. I know people want this, that are for it, but uh, quickly in a hurry. But like, like I sent an email to, to some individuals, this is the same process they did for budget advisory back around twenty eleven, twenty ten. Same process we did for, for the Marine, the Marine Commerce Committee, uh, you know, you know, three, 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 three years ago. We give it, we give the city manager direction, but he comes back within, within a certain timeframe for, for, for a, for a first reading. Uh, I initially asked about coming back in March, but I have no issue conceding with the city manager for an April or May. And that regardless, if, if we do this in March, the new board, which could consist of potentially, well, I'll be gone for sure, could have all the same but me or two new people, could, would, 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 would be selecting these, these new board members. So I think it's appropriate that, well, tonight, this board gives direction to, to start the process. I have no issue with the city manager's request that the new board be the ones that, that um, that, that vote on these readings as well as select tho- those, those board members. And for those, like I said, that are worried about what's going to happen in, in, I mean, though, 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 in, though, in the interim. Think if you watch the candidate forums, or the comments up here, regardless of who's sitting up here, I, I, I don't see any issue with the, with this passing. So um, I don't, I just request that you give us a, 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 just a little bit of, of extra time to, 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 to get this done right. So um, I, I want, I want to thank all those that helped. I'm, I'm in this process. You know, we, we obviously, we, we oftentimes can't affect, uh, change greatly until you come before us and give us an item of concern. And uh, I look forward to see what, what, what this board can do. I'll be in the audience, obviously, but I'm sure the uh, the, the next board will, will, will make the, 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 uh, the best choices as far as the readings go and the makeup of the board. Um, and that's all, that's all, mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, just to add some of the things that uh, why I decided to place that on the agenda with you is because uh, it's, you know, the sea level is, is rising and I am very concerned with that. Environment is uh, everybody's responsibility. It's responsibility to the, to the citizens. It's a responsibility to the government and all of us together. We have to work to ensure that the environment is going to be there protected, not only for us, for generations to come. What I want is let's do it right and better serve the people of Tarpon Springs and serve the environment. I'd like to thank uh, Dory Larson that she provided us all this good information on that. And um, thank you for all the work that you, you've done. This is uh, more than a, a beginning. This is a lot of work that is already in place, but um, I'd like to uh, ask Mr. Licorice to do more research, to look at as many other uh, cities that they have similar boards and get as much information as that we can. Also, I'd like to get our city attorney to take a look at the, and, and draft the ordinance to ensure that it's going to be suitable for our city. And then we bring it, bring it back to us and, and we uh, decide exactly uh, how we're going to do that. I think it's going to be, but also Mr. Licorice, I'd like, if you please, uh, get the recommendations and input of the different departments like the planning, the zoning, the building department, the economy, development manager, and of course, the city clerk and see what do we need because once we establish, when we create this board, we have a selection to make as well. So just like Vice Mayor Panther just mentioned about uh, the budget advisory committee. I remember that took me five times to convince everybody. That was a good thing to do. So I believe that this board is going to be very beneficial to the city as well.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for placing this on the agenda. Um, and I want to thank Dory Larson as well. She's been very persistent with this, with this item. And sustainability is important in this community. We have worked on sustainability. We've never had a formal plan here, but we have had some items that we've worked on with the tree ordinance. Oh my gosh, my head right now. This is so much discussed, but we, we have worked towards sustainability. But um, having a more formal plan in place, I think um, will be beneficial to the city. Um, just like the mayor had stated, sea level rise is, is uh, is a big issue, especially in Tarpon Springs because most of our town is at or below sea level. And when we talked about the seawall earlier, why is that deteriorating? Probably has a lot to do with the sea level rise. So um, I think this is a great start. Moving us in the right direction. I think that, I feel that the city attorney should uh, start writing, working on an ordinance. And I know there's many other communities that have these um, sustainability boards. So I'm sure that, you know, he can um, look at other ordinances and, and, and we can get moving on this. So we're looking at bringing this back after the election. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, and I would agree with that. So we would have to, we would have to, at that point, once it comes back, then we would have to go out just like we normally do and, and uh, look for volunteers. So we, we would structure a board. It would be five or seven people. At that time, we would make that decision if we're looking for five or seven volunteers. And again, I, I thank anybody who wants to volunteer for any of our boards and give up your time for our city. So I, I do appreciate that. So then at that time, we would come up with a structure, right? So we would do the whole structure.
It would be everything, structure, the ordinance, when it comes back.
It's, it's the board of commission that would, would structure this. It was not, not, not against you, Mark, but I mean, it's going to be us directing you on what we want to see.
No, what I will get from the research, I will give you the str- structure. There's going to be a bunch of different points on there. You will have the points. I envisioned that doing it in a, in a workshop to discuss that with you. And then you would decide what the final ord- when it goes to the first, you would decide the final wording. There's a lot of different dynamics that are going to be in there.
Right. I, I looked at the, the ordinance that Dunedin has. So um, I, I, and the way their board operates as well, you know, um, I looked at some of their agendas and stuff. So, you know, something that we could, um, can you look at?
Again, I haven't been saying, I'd be glad to accept anything from the group. While my research, I'd be glad to look at anything they've sent me, they send me. I'd be glad to look at that also in there.
And that they understand they do work under the sunshine like all the other boards then.
All that's going to be in the structure. We lay out the structure, the abilities on who you pick. All those things. There, there's a lot of different parts and pieces to this.
Right.
And again, I still plan on telling you what I said the last time this got up. In two thousand and nineteen, which is this year, we are writing a sustainability plan. We are developing a website. When we left this last, that's what I was doing and, and uh, I still plan and staff and we're still ready and moving forward with, with doing that. So, so that's not, that's not stopping.
Right.
But now we're
Uh, but now we're looking at this board for you and giving example that it can work. Um, and the way we think it can work um, in relation to what staff has done. Again, I won't go into it, but we have been doing sustainability.
And I understand.
Keep looking at the, at the Facebook page 'cause we'll remind everybody all the sustainability we're doing.
Right. And we have, and like I said, I had talked about this, you know, we had our community garden, that's sustainability, the tree ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, Tree City, you know, and there's just so many, there's so many things that we have been doing, but we never had a formal um, formal plan. So.
When we bring everything back to you, you'll be ready to make the decision, you'll be ready to go to first reading and, and, and go, everything will be, everything will be ready to you. You make the final decisions, what the components are, and then, and then we move.
And so if we have any suggestions, we should bring them over to you, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Licorice, I think I've uh, failed to mention that uh, the citizens group, if you uh, work with them and get.
I'd be glad to meet with them, and Paul Smith, as you say, we do have a sustainability. Paul Smith is in charge of sustainability with the city, um, myself, Paul Smith. Um, you know, we'll meet anytime, anyplace and accept any information they have to give us.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yes, uh, thank you. Definitely, I, I a- approve of this and, and wanna move forward and thank you, Dory, for giving me the information. I also talked to Denise Manino, who couldn't be here tonight, tonight. And uh, she would have loved to have been here, but um, she also gave me a lot of information on sustainability and I, I do know that we need to move in that direction. Um, I guess one of my questions is the structure. Um, I had recommended to the maritime uh, board that they be a committee rather than a board, only because of sunshine. And it impaired them because we couldn't go out on the boat together, they couldn't do research, I mean, they, so that's something that I just want you to be aware of because if you're a committee and you're, you know, it's, it's not the structure of like one of our advisory boards, um, it may be more flexible, um, rather than having to worry about sunshine. Um, but otherwise, the other question is, why are we waiting? And I know you mentioned you'd rather wait until after the new board, but you know, will it take until April to do this?
Yes, there's a lot of components to this thing. There's a lot of different ones around the state. There's a lot of different things um, to look at and bring forward. It's not something, you know, you doing, doing a short amount of time. We wanna involve all the staff, look at all components to you. We didn't do the Marine Commerce Committee in two weeks or three weeks. We didn't do other ones. We need that time to do our own research, find the other boards, talk to people, other city managers and stuff that have that, what worked, what doesn't work. That's not something that's done overnight and gone right away.
Realize that.
So we need to do it right. The, the important thing is to do this board right, not to do it swiftly or to beat an election or for whatever reason, we need, we need to have the opportunity to staff. If you're gonna proceed with this, again, as I told you in the memo, I'm still not, but I'm willing to proceed and give you the options of, of a board to think you work. You'll decide on all the com- all the different components you'll make the decision on and then you'll bring the, it forward, the ordinance, if that's what you so choose to do, that'll be, that'll be your decision, but we, we, we need time to research and not, and not rush it.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm looking forward to hearing some public comment uh, tonight. Uh, I do wanna thank uh, Doctor and Mrs. Robertson for meeting with me and talking about um, some sustainability options and avenues. Also wanna thank Mr. Spark for your emails and then also Mr. and Mrs. Larson as well for your emails and phone calls about uh, these areas of uh, improvements in the city that we can look at for sustainability. So, uh, with that, I'm just gonna wait for public comment and there's maybe a little discussion afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll go to public comments.
Good evening. I'm Dory Larson, live at eighteen forty-six Lexington Place in Tarpon Springs. And first, I just really wanted to thank everybody, um, again, that's been involved in this and bringing this to um, this point for a discussion and hopefully moving forward with the creation of a committee or a board or whatever we wanna call it in order to make sure that there's more engagement with citizens and with the board on how we can all improve our community um, with sustainable practices. So I did want to um, ask if I could um, have the ordinance that we're proposing brought into the record. So I brought ten copies of it so that you guys can have that to share with um, I guess citizens if they're interested in reading it. Actually, can I keep one? I think I handed you all of them. Um, oh no, there it is. I have it. Anyway. Um, so I just wanted to go through the, the ordinance briefly. Um, this was modeled after West Palm's, um, but we did spend, our group turned over Tarpon, spent hours and hours researching. Um, I work for the Southern Alliance for Clean Energy and have a lot of relationships with sustainability directors across the state. So very familiar with what other communities are doing and um, and look forward for, you know, Tarpon to be able to um, to have this as well. Um, and I think that the way that it's spelled out is pretty common, um, in terms of an ordinance. Trying to make work a little bit lighter for the city attorney maybe. Um, but the main intent um, on the second page is basically reducing greenhouse gas emissions, increasing energy efficiency, conserving water, reducing waste and employing environmentally responsible products and technologies, promoting the use of methods and systems and materials that do not deplete natural land, empowering residents in the city regardless of social demographics or economic means to be inform, um, informed residents um, in, in ways to live sustainably. So, um, it, it lays out the intent of why we think that this is important, um, and why other communities think that it's important as well. And um, like Commissioner Banther said, um, Governor DeSantis, by way of executive order, has created a new Office of Resilience and Coastal Protection to help coastal communities and habitats um, from sea level rise by providing funding, technical assistance and coordination um, among state, regional and local entities. So I also wanted to bring into the record that um, executive order that's from um, Governor DeSantis's homepage. Just also, once again, to inform our citizens about what is happening, not just within Tarpon Springs, but broader in our um, state and our region. There, there's multiple entities that are understanding the importance of adopting these policies. Um, and and I understand the desire to make sure that the policy is what this board visions. Um, but I would stress the action as quickly as possible, not for a election, but because the sea level's rising and carbon levels are going up. Every day that we wait is, is time that we could be taking action. Um, so, thank you again for um, for your interest and your time and I look forward to continue engaging with all of you about this process.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Loretta Riquetti. I live at fourteen forty-four Coburn Drive. I've lived here for eighteen years. And um, I started a petition uh, to support initiative for city approval of a sustainability advisory committee here in Tarpon Springs. Let's see. So I'm just gonna read what my petition states. Um, just to educate whoever's listening. Uh, "Our coastal city of Tarpon Springs, Florida would greatly benefit by the implementation of a sustainability advisory committee comprised of local volunteers who live or work in Tarpon Springs that would meet monthly to collaborate with our community, local universities and organizations specializing in sustainability to improve the future in, in areas such as flooding, tourism, ecological protection, reducing greenhouse gases, encourage green buildings to combat sea level rise. Empower local citizens by encouraging local participation by providing an open door policy to all advisory committee meetings. Provide feedback, recommendations on new construction improvement projects and reviews of comp plans, development site, plans and wetland rules. Assist in the creation of a transparent and regularly updated website link from main city website that provides previous meeting minutes and current committee topics with relevant links to provide further knowledge to local citizens. Develop and implement a sustainability action plan with conducted research that provides data and reports for recommendations to the city of Tarpon Springs Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Local, local coast, coastal cities such as Dunedin, St. Petersburg and Palm Beach have already adopted sustainability committees and have comprehensive action plans in place. With Tarpon Springs being the most surrounded by water in Pinellas County, it is in great need of a sustainability committee and action plan to ensure a long lasting future by all." Um, I'm one of the approximately eighty members of the Turn the Tide for Tarpon Group that meets monthly. Um, and I love my city of Tarpon Springs and I live in Flood Zone A and I am very concerned for my city and my future property value. And I want to remain here as a long-term resident. And I wanna see my city do something proactive to ensure the, the long-lasting uh, beauty of our city. Um, and if you can please um, have the city clerk add this document to the official record. I have um, about seven or eight copies of my petition that I started on change.org, which currently, I started this petition about two weeks ago and it has two hundred fifty-one supporters as of four o'clock this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. I'm Dave Silman, one six zero seven Stonehaven Way in Tarpon. Um, if you'll indulge me for just a second, it's, it's a related issue. Um, I just wanted to take a quick second to thank uh, the mayor and Mr. Licorice and a few familiar faces who were on the commission the last time. I was before you about a year and a half or so ago. Um, asking for your support for the North Pinellas Solar Co-op that we launched um, back in late twenty seventeen. Um, you're, you were kind enough to endorse that, that effort and your help was invaluable. Mr. Licorice, you rallied some resources for us to help promote it and we appreciate it. And um, for any of you who might not know the, the upshot of that project, it was a smashing success. Actually, we had a hundred and fifty people sign up for the co-op. We um, educated many more than that through a series of public information meetings, just explaining how residential solar works. Um, to folks who might be unfamiliar, we ultimately got about a third of a megawatt of solar power deployed in our uh, local community and um, we got close to seven hundred thousand dollars invested um, through this initiative. Um, of, of, of most interest to this, this body would be that uh, we, we chose an installer through a competitive bid process that happened to be a Tarpon Springs solar installer. So a lot of that investment landed right here in Tarpon and the jobs created were Tarpon jobs. So um, thank you again for your help and um, it's, it's a good example of uh, what happens when you are mindful of sustainability and, and, and take these sorts of actions. Um, I did, I, it, it sounds like everybody is, is, is aware of the size and scope of the problem. Obviously, we're a coastal community and we have to, we have as much skin in the game as anybody. Um, time is of the essence. By all means, with all, all due respect, I know it can't be done in a week or two necessarily, but um, you know, there were two landmark reports issued just a few short months ago. Uh, one being the National Climate Assessment, uh, which basically represents the best science in the United States on this topic. And that was um, just a sh- a few short weeks uh, after the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report was released, uh, basically representing the best science in the world. These are exhaustive reports, uh, many years in the making. Uh, the uh, National Climate Assessment uh, was written over thirteen federal agencies, including the Department of Defense. Uh, the IPCC report is a, a body of scientists that work under the United Nations that aggregate all the science in the world and peer review it for approximately five, six years before they issue their reports. They both concluded that um, you know, this is, is not only man caused, but it's happening faster than they previously realized. Uh, the cost of doing nothing far exceeds the cost of taking action. And they, they concluded this is a dire threat to national security, to the US and global economy and public health, of course. Um, the IPCC went as far as to say that we have twelve years. We have twelve years to dramatically reduce our greenhouse gas emissions before this gets away from us and, and outside our capacity to do much about it. Um, the good news is, I, I, I believe we still can do something about this. I've studied these issues for many years and there's a lot of reason for hope. Uh, su- sustainability board assistance advisory council would be a great step. Um, I helped a, a little bit in the effort to bring this before the board tonight. I did a little bit of legwork and I uh, researched the Dunedin uh, Citizens Advisory Council. They call it the CEQ, Citizens for Environmental Equality. Uh, they've been in existence, I think, since nineteen seventy-two actually. Um, it started initially as a beautification initiative, um, but for many, many of the last several years has been focused on sustainability. Dunedin's doing great things, as I'm sure many of you are aware, they have a sustainability office and a sustainability director on staff. And have for several years, they are looking at all kinds of uh, solar projects, efficiency projects. Um, and, and, and most exciting, they just recently uh, became the hundred and first city in America to commit to a hundred percent renewable energy for all um, city operations by twenty thirty-five. Uh, they were the third or fourth city in Pinellas to make that pledge. And they did it with heartfelt enthusiasm. I was there, it was quite encouraging to see. Um, many of these great things that uh, they're doing in Dunedin were born out of their citizens, their, their CEQ, their citizens advisory board. Um, I, I had a long.
About, because your time has expired.
I'm sorry?
If you please finish up, your time has.
Yeah, sure. I would just add that what I learned uh, through an in-depth discussion with the woman who heads their commission uh, is that they really have become a trusted and valued resource to their mayor and their city commission. Their input is sought out. Quite often, they have um, done a lot of tasks that provide a lot of synergy, a lot of overlap with other projects going on in the city. And they've really added a lot of value uh, in Dunedin and I see no reason why that wouldn't be the case here. So I, I hope you will go ahead and um, approve the, that, that board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Paul Robinson, my wife and I live at nine four eight Bay Shore Drive. I wanna thank the mayor and the vice mayor for putting this item on the agenda tonight. Um, most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I just wanna add a few things. We talk a lot about sea level rise for obvious reasons. We all are aware of what's happening and what is growing. Let's not forget that climate change threatens us in other ways as well. I can't be a physician and not share with you the fact that heat waves kill more people than all other disasters. In addition to the things that were just mentioned, two thousand eighteen was an interesting year for papers being presented on climate change. Two other papers that were presented were NOAA's Arctic Report Card two thousand eighteen and perhaps the most interesting to me, something called Underwater by the Union of Concerned Scientists in concert with Zillow Group, the online um, uh, realty uh, data information company. Um, their prediction based upon the trajectory that we are currently on as a globe and as a uh, country is beyond anything that the IPCC two thousand eighteen talks about. They're talking about one point five degrees centigrade or two degrees centigrade rise. We're not on that trajectory. We are on a trajectory to go above four degrees centigrade. We are not on a trajectory to achieve two feet of sea level rise this century. We are on a trajectory to go above six. So, mitigation is something we should all be involved in. Mitigation like solar panels. like electric cars, like, you know, LEDs, et cetera. And and Commissioner Kikka has mentioned many of these. And these are all things we all should be doing. But we as a community, we as a coast are also going to have to be involved in adaptation. We're going to have to dig the moat, raise the 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 castle walls, if you will, and make them thicker. Because if we just reduce our carbon footprint, we're in trouble. We have to do more than that. And there are, there are ways to do that. We're on a trajectory right now in terms of increasing CO2 and the amount in the atmosphere such that we should expect by 2045 that we will in this, on this coast, have another 60 days a year of temperatures above 95 degrees Fahrenheit. Two months in addition to what we have now. Well, people aren't going to come here to shop. People aren't going to come here to conduct business unless we provide cooling, hydration stations and an atmosphere that makes it possible. Some of these things are not expensive. I just want to say again, we have to adapt as well as mitigate. Thanks for listening. And by the way, Mr. City Manager, the 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 committee, the ad hoc committee of Turn the Tide Tarpon has quite a bit of information. We were happy to provide anything you want. And I would look at Sarasota. I think their sustainability plan is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments on this item? You're not? Bring it back to us. Any commission comment, any addition? Okay. Well, this item was for discussion and I have, I guess we have. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Dory, thank you. Well, that concludes the regulation session agenda and we go to the staff comments. Police Chief?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Chief Attorney?
No comments. Thank you.
City Manager?
So we were looking at a date. Let me give you an update first of all, what we're doing. There is a special meeting of the Art Committee to talk about the NIAIDS again. Hopefully, we're trying to get on track so we can bring back to you, and I've been saying the date wrong on on February 12th to bring back to you. It's ambitious, but that's the goal, to try to bring back so we can get a final form of there. And looking at the different dates and the different conflicts and the different conflicts we had, I was looking at Tuesday, February 19th as that, if you still wish to go forward with the joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and the Public Art Committee. Again, looking at the different conflicts and stuff, that seems to be the date. Plus, again, they're going to be working feverishly to try to get something so we can get those NIAIDS finalized and to you, buddy. So I'm looking at the 19th. I wanted to get, you know, your feedback or or let me know if if that date's good, if you still wanted to do that at this time. Is is that a okay date?
I'm okay with that date. Okay?
6:30 or so, usually 6:30.
Oh, I'm sorry. Same time we need.
We'll probably do it in the upstairs conference room. We'll have the two boards around and we'll do it.
Just about the NIAID.
No, this is, this is about, no, hopefully we'll bring, be bringing back the NIAIDS to you at the commission meeting. This is the joint to give direction for the future projects, to give future projects what you want them to move forward with and future projects that was brought up the last time that you asked me to find the date for.
Those are some of the topics I brought up for direction to the Art Committee, I believe, at the last or the meeting before.
Yeah.
Not to be done tonight, but I would, I would urge that we, I'm certain on that.
Madam City Clerk, any comments? No? Okay, Vice Mayor Panther?
I mean, I have, I have, I have PSTA in about 10 hours. I'm good. But I've got one more. I will. So I I I am going to Dublin next weekend. The Ruth and I are, and again, last year, I I I I I I was able to do this and I'll do it again this year. So so I'll present the key to the city to the new Lord Mayor. I'll give him the proclamation. I'll bring him a sponge. And I got, I I tried to get him a Tampa Bay Lightning jersey, the Irish one, but they're all sold out. He's gonna have his name put on the back, but um, so I got him the, they had the Irish Lightning T-shirt, so something unique from here. So anyway, that that'll, that'll, that'll be a good trip and I'll text the pictures to Michelle.
Okay. Commissioner Silver, comment?
No comments.
Commissioner Kikka?
Uh, no comment.
Commissioner Carr?
Uh, we had a lot of exciting things we talked about tonight in various different areas, so looking forward to discussing these further and seeing the growth of Tarpon Springs continue in a sustainable way, from beautification projects to grocery carts to sidewalks to boards. So thanks for all the public comments and everything we've talked about tonight. I love being a city commissioner and this is a one of the, a great pleasure to be able to sit up here and represent the great city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. I have several things I'd like to announce that Saturday, January 21st, we have movies on the Squash Park and that begins at 6:00 PM. Friday, February 1st is the popular event, First Friday, at 6:00 PM on East Tarpon Avenue. Thursday, February 7th, we have the Sunset Beach Concert. It starts at 7:00 PM. This is a free event. And also I'd like to welcome the New Business to Tarpon Fuel Bar Online. Mr. La Couris, if you extend my congratulations to Mr. Nick McRus for the for his selection for the full scholarship to attend the National Gulf Stormwater Infrastructure Training begins in May 2019, huh?
I'd be happy to. There was only, I think, 24 or 30 in the nation that was given a full scholarship and Nick from Tarpon Springs, we, he got the, he got one of them.
Well, that concludes the regulation session meeting and it's adjourned at 10:22 PM. Thank you all for being here tonight.